Seven o'clock, I'm gonna open our meeting. So we don't have any bills or mail? Do we have a open forum questions? Fabulous. We have the Graves Engineering annual contract. I haven't, has it, anybody had a chance to even look at that or?
No, one does have expired.
This actually is backdated to July 1 as a show.
So we are total.
This is for July 1 of last year to June 30.
Yeah, with no sign.
Okay, I make a motion table that's next meeting, just to move this along a little bit. Since we haven't seen it either. You could send us a copy. Okay, I don't want to take the time right now to make a meeting, so if you could table that for our next meeting.
Second, all favor?
Aye.
So, in that the Cheltenham Town Administrator acted and continues to act in a manner that is extremely disruptive to the proper functioning of the Cheltenham Planning Board, specifically unfair treatment of the former planning director, reduction of former planning director's salary, attempt to demote the former planning director, an attempt to reduce the new planner's salary position. These show a pattern of discrimination against the planning board, denying legal counsel to the planning board, leaking accusatory memo to the media in an attempt to embarrass the planning board, unfair treatment of the planning board's administrative assistants, accusing the planning board of illegal wiretapping, insisting that the planning board has no authority over our site plan appeal, when in fact it does. For causing undue stress to the planning board's, the planning board members and their families, the unknowns of being personally named in a lawsuit doesn't sit well with our children and our spouses. We therefore are compelled to record a vote of no confidence in the current town administrator and most strongly recommend that she change her course of conduct and decisions relative to the planning board and planning board staff. Do I have a motion to vote, have a no confidence vote on our town administrator?
So move.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'd like to do a roll call vote.
Don Clay?
Aye.
Ross Massey, aye.
Jean Vincent, aye.
Elise Jique, aye.
John Smith, aye.
Kathy Midler, aye. Motion carries. In that the select board acted and continues to act in a manner that is extremely disruptive to the proper functioning of the Cheltenham Planning Board, specifically delaying legal counsel when requested for the site plan hearing process and denying the original attorney decided upon because the applicant did not prefer said attorney, denying legal counsel for the site plan appeal. This we believe will eventually turn into another delay. However, this will not repair the fact that the applicant has been gifted the advantage of timing for their strategy. Three, causing undue stress to the planning board members and their families. The unknowns of being personally named in a lawsuit doesn't sit well in our children's and our spouses' minds. We therefore are compelled to record a vote of no confidence in the current select board and most strongly recommend that he change, we can make such a change. They most strongly recommend that he change his course of conduct, that they change their course of conduct and decisions relative to the planning board.
I'd like to make a motion, we change that to chairman of the select board?
Second.
I, I agree that the chairman has direct, the direct ability to assign, to allow us to have legal counsel. However, in, we do currently have two board of selected members that acted, that have openly stated that we should have counsel, that's David Singer and Karen Siewak, of course. We did receive a letter of support from David Singer, that we should have counsel. And none of the other members could have, they could have stepped up and they would have had the majority and they would have had the ability to give us, override the town administrator and chair with legal. However, they did not and have not stepped up, so I personally believe it's the select board. I mean, I guess we could exclude Karen and David, but that's, discussion?
Well, notwithstanding those facts, we also don't know that they didn't privately stand up for us. So, that has to be taken into consideration. I don't know they didn't, but I don't know they didn't. This is my opinion.
Any comments?
How, what are you saying? Are you saying, how?
They wanna, they wanna exclude Deb Noble and Joseph Arwitz because they're kinda taking a no, a no stand, at least in, at least in public. But I have to believe that if they did care and they had the majority vote, that means anybody, so we can automatically exclude them too for standing up, because then we would have had a majority vote and we would have had, we would have had counsel. So to this date, only, only David Singer and only Karen Siewak have, have stated that we should have counsel. So in, in my opinion, by default, they're, they should be still held accountable for making that decision for the town, our planning board, the town's people. Do we have a motion to, for, we have a motion, we have a second roll call?
No, we're just talking about deleting that word. I make a motion to accept it as presented.
As the whole select board?
Okay.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call again?
Don Clay, yes.
Ross Massey, yes.
Jean Vincent, yes.
Elise Jique, yes.
John Smith, yes.
Kathy Midler, yes. Motion carries, thank you. So I have, the planning board wants to thank select board members Karen Siewak and David Singer for their efforts in our quest to obtain legal counsel for the site plan appeal. Both have shown their support against the majority of their peers, and we want to thank you. So we have me and ours.
Anderson Brooks? Come on.
Sure.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you, have a great night.
Thank you, Madison.
But really, all you can do is that.
This is one of the greatest.
I don't wanna do something that I shouldn't do. Date of endorsement is the same day as date of approval. So, date of approval and date of endorsement, I don't wanna write anything that I shouldn't. That's exactly correct, yes. Or you pay small fortunes to have someone else living your house. Thank you. Alright, so this is just an acceptance of the Infinity Energy Services Freeland subdivision plan on 75 Brookfield Road.
The purpose of reading what Victoria just said, to start the file. Subdivision regulations require a time to review what you want to do with the official submission. No discussion today. Have you noticed that the draft agenda for March 20th? The item was added for discussion, you want to have it that through or? Mathias? Mathias, do you have a preference for when you would like this item to be on the planning board agenda? I mean, when would you like this to be on the planning board agenda?
Oh, I mean, wait.
So we have 45 days to act, and so we come to the board and get set.
I don't have agenda in front of us, but I mean, what helps?
You do have one, but I can't show you what I have.
Are you in a huge rush? Brookfield Road is right in, last bike.
No, this is the first time.
This is just the Freeland.
Starting all over, but it's gonna go on to the moratorium. Me.
What is the moratorium, come on? So it's supposed to come in and then, and then at town meeting, if the solar rights get, then they follow the new solar. So then you get to be like the guinea pig, to deal with our new rights.
Let's do the April 3rd, county break.
Motion?
I make a motion, we move it to April 32nd.
All favor? Anybody just take it, thank you. So, we have a continued public hearing for four score holdings? Bring it, chair.
Good evening, members of the board. Daniel Kalisman here on the half of four score. For our last meeting, since that time, we have responded to all the comments from Graves Engineering. I believe the board's in receipt of a memo from Graves acknowledging receipt of all of our comments and approving the final points. And we've also met with the police department. It's my understanding that they've also indicated to the board that they have no further comments on our security designs and plans currently.
You have a letter from the police chief to that?
And we've also sought extensively to track down a firm that would review and analyze our odor mitigation plan, I believe between Bill and I, we reached out to about five companies and were unable to track down a group that would give a thorough and proper review. However, we, we believe that we've come up with a, sort of a plan going forward to ensure the continued compliance of our facility. And I think I pass this off to my colleague, Parrot Smith, to talk about the particulars for the board's consideration.
Just to confirm what Dan said, I did try to find a firm that would do an odor review for us, and was not able to find somebody. I contacted five firms, and without any success. So the actions are for me to try to continue to find somebody or for the board to come up with an alternative standard or performance approach for the board to review and condition through odor plan. So I got some to sort of present what they would propose to you, and then we can take that under advisement and decide whether that's the way you want to go.
So, Kirk Smith, four score. We submitted an odor mitigation plan which outlines the operation, maintenance of the equipment along with equipment performance. The maintenance plan outlines, you know, working on that equipment, replacing filters if necessary. What, what we would propose is at the board's discretion, maybe in collaboration with marijuana advisory committee, a period of monitoring for the facility for, for odor control, for maybe a preliminary period of up to six months to monitor the site with complaint response protocol in place, so that complaints to the facility are communicated to the planning board and the marijuana advisory committee and vice versa. And, and we would leave, we would leave that up to you. We would work with you to develop the plan, we would have a complaint protocol. Compliance would typically develop a complaint protocol as, as normal and best practice of the operation of the facility. So, all equipment changes would be logged, all the maintenance is logged in a best practice, and, and the complaint response would flow through the board and to the advisory committee.
And just to piggyback a little bit on Kirk's commentary, the plan that was submitted, the odor mitigation and waste disposal plan that was submitted is fully compliant with the state regulations. We in fact believe it exceeds the state standards. So we believe it to be a, you know, industry best practices plan, which we would continue to implement on a going forward basis. And the, the six months of monitoring for the facility would involve monthly, you know, memos or check-ins with the, the planning board to identify and flag any issues or complaints that have been brought to our attention.
Do you have anything in writing in terms of a proposed condition or mitigation that you would suggest?
I think we would propose, you know, potentially two conditions. One would be that we continue with industry best practices going forward for odor mitigation measures. And the other be simply that we would entertain six months of monitoring process whereby we would submit memos to the planning board on a monthly basis, identifying any issues that have arisen or have been brought to our attention and our mitigation measures taken.
So what I would suggest is that we get that in writing and then submit it to the marijuana advisory committee. And you may remember from our visit in North Brookfield that Roseanne Stanley from BEP was very helpful in terms of analyzing the EGG odor plan. I would suggest we send that condition to her for her review as well, see whether that would be acceptable.
I think we, you know, set the standard with, with having the, the odor plan reviewed and I feel uncomfortable swaying from, from that. I know it's an industrial zone and I know there's not closed residences, but I'd be interested to know what, does every going facility in the state have an engineering view or they just kind of bring it in and chance the odor, does anybody know that answer?
I think everyone's different, as we've, as we've heard. Some have problems, some don't. I'm a little curious in why is six months, it doesn't seem like enough time, you know, for the filter material to be even saturated with the, at that point, and mature plants and everything else. I would expect it to be. Exactly.
Six months would be enough time to bring a full crop to harvest, to manufacture products. And, and so all spaces, you know, you would get, most of those spaces propagated at that point. We're open to a longer period of time, if that's, if that's acceptable to the board. And, and please keep in mind that this, this practice of ongoing, you know, complaint log and response and, and maintenance log, that's not being proposed as a preliminary period of time. That's ongoing, that's real practice, that would be standardized in any other manufacturing industry.
So, so the, the six month period is just reporting back to the, the planning board for?
That's correct, and could extend for so long.
I would still, I would still like to extend that out to at least a year, just for.
We happen to have Jim Philbrook here, do we?
Yep.
He's got the next best.
Do you wanna come?
Sure.
I know people like being loud out in the middle of the evening, so thank you.
Name rings, I love her.
John Sandborg, chairman of the board of health.
So, I mean, whenever we can bring the, the specialists in for their opinion on this kind of stuff.
So, so Jim is the expert on this, but I can assure you that you folks would not be called for odor complaints. It would be Jim Selberg, board of health. He would be the first point of contact, and that's how I believe it is probably in A-Town. I don't think that the planning board wants a way that's replaced and approved would have anything to do with that. You know, you, you look at the plan, you look at odor mitigation and so forth, and then you assume that it's maintained and care of. If it's not, it would be 240, 2210, the call would go through.
Jim was pretty, he was pretty serious about no odor. And so I, I mean, I'd be uncomfortable saying, okay, let's, let's not get an engineer review on their, on the odor mitigation plan and, and take it as it comes, I, like I.
It sounds like you're having trouble finding an odor engineer. And let's be honest, most people here are not experts, that's fine. One thing though, that I know Jim Philbrook did bring to our board was that he was very impressed with the North Brookfield facility. He said when, and it was at least one of the ladies, I think, you. He said when it was at least one of the ladies, I think, you, you walked right around the building, I mean, within arm's reach or so of it, and you could detect no odor outside during operation.
Until the, I didn't, not even in the building, when the doors were open, where in the actual grown facilities where you smelled it.
That's good. That's a real good sign that it is possible. Now whether that means carbon filtration that's three feet deep instead of an industry standard of six inches, I don't know. I was at a meeting here a month or two ago where we had an expert here talking about carbon filtration and you know, all of the mechanics of the air flow and odor mitigation. And I'll leave it up to you, but absolutely the odor complaints will come to the Board of Health.
I'd like to clarify two points. Jim is also the Chair of the Marijuana Advisory Committee. So my, you know, leaving that to the discretion of both those boards was assuming its inclusion of the, you know, the planning of this. And I would also suggest that, you know, the review of this plan, you know, is, I don't know if that's something that could be a condition, but I think that the quality of equipment that we're using in this facility is way above what most of my clients in my day job would, you know, spend the money on to filter this air. So we were assuming that the Board of Health would be involved because any air quality or odor control in a landfill or any other industrial product would be handled at the Board of Health. So I just wanted to clarify that assumption and sort of putting this to planning and marijuana advisory committee.
Dan is correct in what I just stated.
So I mean, if the Board of Health and Jim come in front of us and say, we're good without you having an engineer review? We feel perfectly safe, that's what we recommend. We could look at it a little bit more, but until we kind of get that, I'd be hesitant to say, okay, let's approve, let's figure it out. You know, I'd be hesitant to do something like that without your.
We do have a Board of Health meeting scheduled for March 19th, so that could be on there. That was one of the questions I had, questions. I could just kind of piggyback on that. I keep seeing plans and we do have plans that do come to the Board of Health. These are revisions, so I realize they're not final. I keep hearing about the 45 day review. The various town boards will have 45 days. Is that, when does the clock start ticking? Is that the final plan or?
What's the date that we send you the plan so it gets logged in?
So each individual plan would have its own 45 day window, is that correct?
Well, you know, that's a good question. Normally we get the initial plan and we give that for the 45 day window. When succeeding plans come in, we just forward those along and would ask for a comment by the next meeting of the planning board.
Okay. Because we weren't sure, you know, do we need to have a review with each plan? Even if it's a revision where it's just, I would consider it a fine revision.
No, only if you feel that you wanted to comment on it, would you?
Right. So we just don't want to miss the boat. For instance, for odor mitigation, if there was nobody's from the board represented tonight, I mean, if everybody just said, well, they don't care, not that you would assume that, but we could miss the boat and then the plan could go through without any sort of odor control mitigation detection monitoring whatever. And that's what, we just want to make sure that every, any facility is up.
Will communicate?
Yes, through Jim. Jim is very, very good and he is in contact. It's a learning curve for so many people with legalization of marijuana, you know, the growth facilities and the medicinal and recreational. But he is spending a large amount of time with state officials, cannabis control, condition, and everything else. He is the by party expert. Keep him involved and I think we'll be okay.
Bill, is that usually a stipulation of the plan approval that they get the board approvals or is that?
No, it's voluntary whether they choose to comment or not.
So and along those lines, if there is no comment from any board after 45 days, then we assume they have no issue with it. Correct. And then it is assumed as approved by those boards.
That's 45 days from the first submission.
So just keep the, keep the plans coming. I know that he showed us that and some of the plans are like wallpaper in your living room. They're tremendously large and gosh. Yeah. And we're not engineers, but I think if we are at least involved and Jim knows about it, that's a step in the right direction and I do appreciate it. Later.
Thank you.
The Chair, how much effort was put into finding an odor engineer? Is this just something that we've been trying for the last week or are you getting calls back saying no? Or are you just not getting calls back?
So I contacted Ned. He declined. I contacted Ed Noaxon with G L R Metal. He declined. I contacted Jim McMahon at Green Bull Group in reference to their North Brookfield facility. He said they didn't have an odor peer review done on their property. They just collaborated with the planning board. I contacted Tyne Bond, he declined. And then I contacted a firm called PES and I never got back from. So I could continue to try to find other companies that can do it.
I'd feel more comfortable with that also, but if that's not possible and they came up with a plan and submitted a plan, you know, we can give it some more time. At least at the next meeting you'd be ready with a plan that was submitted and we could review. Since right now I don't see any plan other than.
We already have an odor mitigation.
We have an odor mitigation plan.
That's correct.
But we don't have a plan for not having that peer review. So you were, you know, you were talking about putting something together.
Well, certainly I'd be happy to draft the conditions that we would propose for any decision by the board. Again, it would dovetail into what we've discussed before. Essentially putting the odor mitigation review on marijuana advisory committee slash Board of Health given that they're, that's really within their purview and under their review.
Question on that. So if the Brookfield facility is already operating in an odorless environment, would it make sense then to look at their odor mitigation plan? Compare it to what Brookfield is doing, compare size wise? And if indeed it pretty much matches up or similar, assume with confidence that it will also mitigate the odor as it's doing now? And then have them put together a plan that states what happens if it doesn't?
You mean us as laymen?
No, no, no. I meant since we can't get an odor specialist, maybe have an engineer who knows what these things do? Because I certainly did not feel qualified to do so. But have them look at the two plans and if they look pretty similar, then in the facility is a similar size. Just to save the applicant time, save everyone time and energy, since we're probably not going to get an odor mitigation specialist, let's look at these plans side by side and if they work, if they're already working, hope that they, assume that they're going to work.
I think that's part, I think we should get the buy-in of the Board of Health.
Yes, absolutely.
Whether it's a joint, a meeting, or they have their meeting and they just inform us, maybe we can work with them somehow. Can you reach out to Jim to see if he can, whatever he thinks is good, whether it's towards me or a couple of us. So we want them to feel comfortable. The facility in North Brookfield, they actually have a separate HVA system. You can correct me because you were there also. In every single room of their building, there's an individual HVA system in every room. So nothing ever mixes. So it is super high tech and tough, absolute tough.
Are you aware what they've done for odor mitigation at that facility?
I can't speak to that. Although we have, we have been before the Marijuana Advisory Committee already. They're aware of our project, they've reviewed our materials. And to my knowledge, they have not presented us with any comments or concerns with our proposed plans. So we haven't appeared before that committee, which includes obviously the.
Have you?
I think they've, sorry.
Have you actually looked into buying and purchasing the system for your facility?
I, we specify these systems every day. So I mean, that's the other piece here is that the equipment we specified is because of what this facility is going to be. So because of our position in this business, in this industry, it is our job to understand how to handle this odor. So and I don't want to get into the specifics, but I can, you know, there are standards. There are no standards for cannabis other than what other municipalities have done across the country. So there are requirements in the state regulations, but there is no cannabis industry standard. Now there are ashtray standards and merbrated filters. Those are the types of filters we'll be using. And the performance of what we've specified in the building is because it's going to be sort of a showroom for our prospective clients. So we would be showing that best in class equipment and we're putting these in not only retail facilities, but cultivation facilities on a weekly basis. We've worked on over, I personally have worked on over 50 sites that require odor mitigation. So for me, this is a standard practice and like North Brookfield, an odor mitigation plan is not a requirement of the special permit process. It is a supplement to that based on the nuisance abatement of the facility. So, you know, we provide that as a supplement. Obviously, this is something that the public is concerned about is an air quality or odor control issue. But it's something we're very comfortable with and feel that what we put on paper far exceeds what we see going into these facilities on a regular basis based on what people are spending. So we want this to be an exemplary facility. We do not want neighbors nuisance by odor. And we want to set a standard that we believe people in the state and this industry should follow. So this is, you know, we're not skimping on what we're doing in the building to avoid cost. We're trying to show people what we do every day and how to do it right.
And I think when we had the conversation the last time you were here, I think we felt comfortable that you would do the right thing. And I felt pretty comfortable with that. And we also said it would probably be a pretty quick meeting tonight.
Sure.
You'd have the odor plan, we'd have it reviewed, we'd come together, we'd see those reviews and we'd say, okay, this sounds great.
I think a lot of people are busy in this industry right now reviewing these plans and doing this work is my honest opinion. I think that there are a lot of very qualified people out there. I think they're all as busy as we are.
I think it's unfortunate we don't have that tonight because I was, you know, I think that's the way that we were looking at it.
But you know, at the end of, our job here is to ensure that we're doing everything we can to protect our town in any way and to prevent 100 calls going to our Board of Health also. So do we, do we want to see what, if we can meet with the Board of Health or reach out to Jim and see what he thinks is the best route to take?
Sure.
Advisory Committee is having a meeting on the next week on the 12th. So the Marijuana Advisory Committee is having a meeting next week on the 12th at 5:30. Will you attend that meeting?
Somebody will be attending that meeting.
We're on the, we're before the Board of Selectmen on the 12th. I believe at 6, 7 o'clock eventually.
Yeah, this is a 5:30.
So if you like, we'll send a letter to the Marijuana Advisory Committee asking them to, will you know?
And the entire Board, and the Board of Health itself. So I know that it's simple, but let's hear, let's see what, let's get their opinion and chime in. I don't want to own this by myself. Let's get everybody to buy in on this.
Do you have a list of previous installations of towns that do work source of?
Sure.
I mean, at least something that we can trace back. Not to say we don't trust you.
Sure.
Just so we can make a few phone calls or see.
Trust what's there by. Can you, will you send a list, some towns that we can reach out to and get some references?
Google it very quickly.
Are they currently on the agenda for the 20th?
Yes, I think we could add them to the 20th agenda.
They're already on the agenda.
They're on the draft. So they're on the draft agenda.
Okay, right, 7:20.
Do we want to open this up to questions from the public?
We have people here. We might as well.
Do we have any questions from the public on? Force form? Thank you.
Just one quick question about the process.
Come on up and introduce yourself.
You could sit there. Right here. Norrie Smith, 136 Dresser Hill Road. So I'm just curious about the process. So you're applying for a facility that would be medical only or growing only initially? And then the idea is that you'd be prepared to convert to a retail sale shop at any moment when given the opportunity? So what's the process for converting a medical only or a growing only facility to a retail? Does that require another review of the planning board for any entity that does that or is it?
I would say that yes, it would require.
The same thing happens, so whether, just to change from medical to recreational, there's another whole.
Start all over?
Yeah, it's a whole different.
And for growing to retail, same process?
This application is, to clarify, this application is only for cultivation and manufacturing. It is for an adult use establishment. If we wanted to implement a retail facility, it would be a separate application process reviewed by, again, Force Select.
And there's currently, there's currently, there's a host agreement with VGG and for Green Bull to hold those retail licenses?
No, VGG has not applied for.
But is it, is it in their host agreement though?
Well, the zoning file allows for the planning board to approve to recreational adult use establishments. So there's currently one available.
So to make a motion, we continue this to March 42nd?
Second. On our favor?
Aye.
Stand.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
VBT Energy Solutions, the solar accessory battery discussion on the solar plant on Brookfield.
Do you have any packets of force permits approved next week? He and Jason and Kara from the Fire Department have been reviewing the systems on their behalf. Fortunately, they became a much more effective fire department than they thought. So they are asking for more time to complete their review. These are very complex systems and they do not feel, they are ready to make recommendations for the planning board. What procedures should we have to review and prove it? So.
So will it be automatic continuing because without their recommendations, we don't want.
Well, that's up to you of course, but I think we should let the.
You can't prepare the topic.
Yeah, well, Bill was kind of about to send me that before I got here anyway, so I just figured I'd tell him anyway. Understand what's going on there, asking for some more time. Last time I was here, I handed out information, pictures, specifications on the battery containers. I have with me as well some screening that we are proposing at the site for visual and I guess it can also serve as acoustical barriers specifically at the culvert road side. And some cross sections as well to show again the visual aspect of it. So just to be clear, I responded to Bill and Kirk as well. We're not asking technically right now for the planning board to have the final sign off. We're trying to understand is the process to get the approval? Is it going to be something that requires a public hearing, opening a public hearing or we accept it as a field change? Something in the past, something small changes, we've typically, we submit a plan change to Mike Andrew and he, you know, documents it, informs the planning board and we move forward with the field change. And I know this is more substantial than a small like fence ruling or something like that, but we're not saying that the planning board handling it has a field change is the final sign off. We don't listen to what Kirk or the fire chief says. We're asking that it just be documented that it will be a field change. We can move forward and we know that we're subject to the fire department and the building department and the electrical department's comments. So that's why I was here was to see if that's a possibility to get some direction so we know.
So you can plan.
We can plan, yeah. We know if it's, you know, if it's going to be a public hearing, there's going to be. to be associated times with applications, wait, you know, public hearing, notifications of others' lists, all that type of stuff. You know, we're hoping in our conversations, I think, leading to this point, it has been directed more towards it being, assuming that it's going to be able to be handled as a field change, which is what we prefer, to be honest, as the applicant. You know, I know that's not what makes or breaks it, but that's what we're hoping comes of it. But we're trying to get that direction if that's going to be the case. Again, we're happy to work with whatever comments come from the fire department, building department, fire department, and make sure that those are implemented here. But as far as, you know, the visual access, that stuff we feel like has been pretty well vetted at this point, the information that we've submitted, and we're hoping we kind of get... Be able to move forward with it with the planning board's, you know, semi-approval and, you know, notwithstanding what happens to the rest of the people looking at it.
How much... How much power, I guess, do we have over the field changes? So, can... What can we do to make sure something terrible doesn't happen if that happens?
Yeah.
So, I think, you know, the point of having the building commissioner and the fire department review these is to get an understanding of how impactful they really are. Once we know that, we can decide upon what's the correct process for the planning board to allow it. If they come back and say that, you know, they can be handled through certain mitigation practices, then I think we could handle it as a staff field change. If they feel that there are more serious impacts for these facilities, then they might suggest that the planning board actually review or modification of the site plan, which could either require a full public hearing process or just a planning board meeting where it's reviewed. So, I understand Ernie's dilemma here because we don't really have that answer plan yet. So, I think we kind of need to wait for the process to play out and we know exactly what we're dealing with.
I agree.
I agree. Agreed. There is no semi, you know...
I understand. I get what's going on.
We can't sort of approve you. It's either an approval or not, so we're going to have to wait.
Took no action at this time?
Tonight, do we want to... Did they give us any timeframes?
Kurt was suggesting a month or so.
A month?
April. That's what I'm following.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
That was on three, right? April, we came up.
April 3rd?
April 3rd. So, it's April 3rd. Make a motion, we continue on April 3rd.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Thanks. So, we have the continued public hearing for Valley Goober subdivision.
I have a sign-on sheet here. I appreciate if you guys would sign it or pass it along if you're here for VGG here.
Now, there's... Some coming in just... Yes. The... 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 Where are you? We can't leave.
No, you went to... You went to talk to council. You were not open hearing or...
I mean, I kind of... Put a sweet want mark here. Anybody have to make a statement? Just so we don't get accused of whispering. Our meeting... We have a meeting with FinCom and it was changed, so we're just kind of figuring out if everybody's happy with the 27th date. At 7:15?
I'm going to recuse myself.
You guys are ready to present?
Yes, ma'am.
Except for we'll wait for tomorrow.
We're chatting.
Of course they are. Yeah, half the hours. Down to nine.
Well, we're... What do you need for license? Have you heard approved the last release for January extension? With the condition that they secure the check to $10,000, $15,000. So, I have to chat. You can now sign this.
Do we have a vote on it?
No.
We can have another check that came back. Is that cleared up? We have another check that we have to us. Is that cleared up?
Yes.
Wait, what's mine?
On the right-hand side.
I do. Move up a little bit. Move my stuff out of your way.
Can you guys sign? There's only three lines. You're out. I'm joking.
You want to sign?
I'm done.
No.
Attorney Rosen, do you feel comfortable with only three board members voting on this?
Do I feel comfortable or are we agreeing to go forward?
Are you agreeing to go forward?
Yes, we are agreeing to go forward.
Thank you.
So, I guess we start with the record, Mike Bellack from Marine Associates. The last... I think the easiest way to... I'll keep this really short this week. January 17th, I believe, was the last submittal after our last hearing. It started our new review, I guess we'll call it, in terms of making the board help the conservation of the waters up to speed and comfortable with what was going on. From that plan set to now, Mike Andre from Graves has given us minor comments, which we've addressed. There was a sub-substantial submittal between that after a face-to-face meeting in the planning office with Tajarat, the conservative agent, Mike Andre, myself, Dan Mary, and Bill, Mr. Bill right here. We did address some of his comments, which Graves put into his... I'm sorry, excuse me, which Mr. Ivory put into his Graves memo. We did receive a memo today. Today, or...
Yes.
Yes, today from Mr. Andre. And I will summarize my opinion on this, but it feels as though we've addressed what was the minor outstanding comments from the last time we've seen this point. It's an analogy, it's been a public forum. There's been no major substantial changes to any of the designs. There's a lot of small detail changes. So, we really wanted to walk through them. We could, but I think it was... You better start to give to the board if they have any particular questions or concerns or comments. I won't... Since Mike isn't here, Bill, if you want, take over for that in terms of your memo.
Well, not really qualified. It appears to me that all of his questions have been addressed satisfactorily by the recent plan function. So, I think he has indicated that there are no waivers that they are requesting from the planning board and that the design is presented as standard engineering practices that he's comfortable with. He does indicate a few conditions that the board, if you approve it, should include in the decision. But those are more ways to oversee the project to make sure that it's built properly. So, I can't talk about the engineering aspects of this, but I do believe the trust of others that all of the concerns have been addressed. And this is the 10th letter that Mike has provided, so it's been thoroughly reviewed at this point. Also, I would note that we have a comment letter from Peter Boryo, the water service superintendent, who's here today, if you'd like to come forward. And from Dennis Carlson in the fire department indicating that they are satisfied from a fire perspective for the finished plan. And then finally, there's a letter in your packet from Todd Girard, the conservation agent, who reviewed the plan. And he also believes that plan... He doesn't have any other comments. He did indicate that he wanted to see a stormwater pollution prevention plan draft, which was provided to him earlier this week. So, there's his concerns have been addressed as well.
I was just reviewing and the plan review number 10, which is the one dated today. There's still a question, the way I'm reading it, that... Do you have a copy of that? Again, under number seven says, "Graves Engineering suggests the planning board request clarification from Town Council." And is things... It is unclear at this time if this definitive plan can be approved as proposed.
If we refer that question to Mark, who he indicated... So, remember, Mark, they had provided a strip, five-foot strip along, which the road provided. So, 50...
That was a different issue, I thought. No, is that it? Okay. Okay, the last comment from... Here, this is something we had last...
G.I. has worked for the company. What was he...
Did we get a comment from Curtis?
Yes, I don't have it with me, but he did send something in previously.
About that five-foot section? He had no problems with it?
Correct.
Yeah, we had weighed in on that before. Lots are in two ownership and that they were both assigned as applicants, then that would constitute a proper application. We can talk about this to a few minutes.
I was just wondering why it was still open. It doesn't say now.
This is like a string.
I understand that, but everything else has been acknowledged.
Yeah, but at the end of number seven, he says, "We're done." No further comment in the planning info from the city or the court.
Okay. Now, do two different people own lot A and lot B?
I think I answered that in the abstract. Maybe Attorney Rosen can help us.
I'm sorry, go ahead. What was the question?
If you look at... Do you have the greatest comment letter?
Yes.
Number seven, first paragraph. Two new lots by combining existing lots 10 and 10.1, separate process and plan for the definitive subdivision and perhaps prior incorporated portions of both existing lots. It's unclear if it can be approved. We discussed this and came to the conclusion that if the lots were held in common ownership, the line didn't matter. And if the lots were held in separate ownership, as long as the two separate entities were signing the application, then it would be a legal application.
Correct. And we referenced, I think, the cases Broken Stone, where they talked about land shown on a plan. And they talked about that the legislature didn't say lots or subdivisions shown on a plan. It just says land. And the fact that the land shown on the plan, each owner of the land is joining in the application, that that was adequate. Correct.
So, is this a common ownership?
It is a common application. Each owner is a party to the application.
So, you and I could decide that we have Jason Pies as a property. We could join together and create a joint venture as long as we both sign the application.
Correct.
Subdivision control law requires the applicant to be the owner in its strict requirement.
Do we have other questions or...
So, we have letters from other boards and departments and nobody has any concerns or...
Well, Peter Boryo's here. We can ask him to come up and... And then if we do not get a letter from the border health...
But we have a representative from border health.
I can come up if you want.
We'll be...
After Mr. Boryo. Okay.
So, yes, we discussed this. The water sewer commission discussed this at our last meeting, I guess, last week on February 25th. And there's some, I guess, questions remaining, but nothing outlining where we'd say, "No, don't approve." It does show water and sewer proposed to both lots. However, it doesn't show what type of usage might be or what's planned to be put on those lots. So, we can't just say, "Sure, water and sewer are available." Until we get a specific request saying what's going to be built, then we can take that request and evaluate what the use is going to be and then determine whether or not we have enough sewer and if there will be enough water available at that time. So, moving forward, I think the commission was comfortable that depending what they're doing with those lots, if it's one house on one and one house on the other or whatever happens, then you can, I guess, review it at that time and make a determination. So, other than that, a couple of residents showed up and relayed some other concerns. And I think if this plan gets approved, as far as what happens with ExxonMobil water line, we will submit the approved plan to ExxonMobil and make an adjust what they plan to install in the summer after it's approved. And the last question I brought up was alternative road, whether it's a public or private way. As far as we're concerned, the new water line shows a four-inch water line extension up that road because it's currently identified as a public way. And that's what we're going to continue to go with at this time until it's proven otherwise.
Lawyers here, the two amazing attorneys have both said that that land, that road is private.
We had a title exam provided to us. We had a discussion about this a meeting or two ago. I see nothing in the title to suggest that the road is public in that it doesn't meet the standards spelled out in the case law for a public road.
So, we had... That's why I had shot the email a little bit. I just didn't want the tenants to be paying for a water line of a private road when the... That those ones could be placed back in the town versus...
Well, the residents at ExxonMobil is paying to install that, so we will...
Yes, but the difference goes into the... Goes into your...
I don't believe so. Thank you. I will let ExxonMobil know and I'll let the commission know with that. I can get something from the planning board and writing referencing that and just to make sure that we're all on the same page and present that to the commission and we can present that to ExxonMobil and see what that changes.
Because I think that if we provide water line of a private road, then...
Lawyers here, the two amazing attorneys have both said that that land, that road is private.
We had a title exam provided to us, and we had a discussion about this a meeting or two ago. I see nothing in the title to suggest that the road is public in that it doesn't meet the standards spelled out in the case law for a public road.
So we had, that's why I had shot the email a little bit, I just didn't want the tenants to be paying for a water line of a private road when the, that, those ones could be placed back in the town versus?
Well, the residents at ExxonMobil is paying to install that, so we will.
Yes, but the difference goes into the, goes into your email.
I don't believe so. Thank you. I, we'll let ExxonMobil know, and I'll let the Commission know with that. I can get something from the planning board and writing referencing that, and just to make sure that we're all on the same page, and present that to the Commission, and we can present that to ExxonMobil and see what that changes.
Because I think that if we provide a water line of a private road, then I think as many residents are going to want water lines. So I just, again, not my purview, but when you notice it when you're looking at the plans, it kind of.
But much like when we look at in a vacant parcel, if there's room for it to be subdivided , there may be an additional stuff on those properties for future development, because once the water line is installed and once that road is repaved, then under highway curfew, there's a five-year pause where they can't, they can't access that roadway to do another tap to that main. So because it's a hundred-acre parcel, we're going to do more than leave them one step. So whether it, if we, something we can, we can talk about some more and configure based on what gets approved with the subdivision plan, and what we're left with, and what they can plan it for. Okay?
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
At our Board of Health meeting on Tuesday, February 26th, we had Mr. and Mrs. Russell come in, a handful of other residents, I would call them the butters, and they had some concerns that there were, some of their questions weren't being addressed properly, although it's probably a stretch to say that they were Board of Health related, largely maybe, but nonetheless, I felt compelled to show up tonight just to make sure that whatever the concerns of some of the butters, that they're being addressed, they're written down and taken care of. They were stormwater questions, road drainage, there's also drainage that goes from this project back to Russell's property, it's my understanding. And I didn't look at the plans, I mean, I looked, but again, I'm not an engineer, but it sounds like what they got is nine acres of subdivision plan, is that about right now? About nine acres, bring it into, under, an underground retention, which I have heard before. And then from there, a pump will pump water through a 12-inch pipe up to a culvert across from the Russell property, and then from there it goes into a six-inch culvert.
I think Mike could better explain that than I could, so.
Well, yeah, because I saw this.
If you have a question, I'll address it to Mike.
Okay, so 12-inch going into a six-inch pipe, and then, you know, you're taking what ultimately is previously road drainage from a small area, and now you're adding a lot. And the reason why I bring this up is because I have a six-inch culvert that comes from approximately half acre of property across the street from me. That six-inch culvert goes under the road and then into a little drainage ditch next to my property. And back eight years ago, during some big rainstorms, I had so much washout, I called Todd Girard, because I had a tremendous amount of erosion on my property that was then going into wetlands behind my property. So that was half an acre, maybe, this is nine acres, because I just want to be sure because the Russells have some concerns, and I'm sure Mr. Andre did his homework, and maybe I'm wrong, or maybe the Russells are mistaken, but I just want to get clarity on that, as far as, you know, protecting his, Mr. Russell's property.
Well, Mike Andre had thoroughly reviewed that proposal, and seemed satisfied, but I'd let Mr. go back.
So Mr. Andre answered that, and I believe it's paragraph 13 in his comments, and they did a comprehensive review, including a site walk, visiting the property. So it is something that the towns engineer did, the engineer for this project, we need to know this to be that.
And both he and Mr. Gerard have no issues with any drainage self-runoff, or is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. There was also an issue with potential for road drainage coming down, and as you know, this time of year you get ice pedal up and so forth. But again, this is early enough to work out, but I, again, I volunteered to come here, and just also for my peace of mind, I want to make sure that that was all said. Sounds like Mr. Andre figured that as well. Also, the highway department, they were concerned about the road, it's a two-foot wide road, and I don't know if that would have to be part of it, or some of it, or all of it, would have to be changed widely, whatever. But again, nothing, no changes to the road?
For a two-lot subdivision, no, that would normally be required.
For a larger project?
Perhaps would be, yes.
Okay, so leading right into that, and I'm getting ahead of myself, but believe me, everybody here wants to know, I'm sure, what happens if this appeal, and this is just a what? What happens if the appeal were to go through, and the next phase of the project goes, goes into play? Obviously, that's what BGG is all doing. Does the site plan review on the next phase then kind of start all over? You start with all new plans, all the boards get involved, open for public opinion, public forum, meetings and so forth?
Well, Mark, I guess.
And I know this is, this is down row.
Well, the site plan review has already been completed and finalized here with a denial, so that is the site plan review.
Right, but the land court can come back and whenever they're.
They could remand it if they wanted to. I don't, I'm not a participant in that, so I don't know the posture. They could conceivably remand it.
Okay, so worst-case scenario, let's say that you get overturned, and BGG gets the green light on the next phase of the project, with the greenhouse, with everything. Then would the site plan, would that have to come back through?
Not necessarily.
So, so then, that's, that would be it? You'd be, your hands would be off of the project in its entirety if that happened?
Can I ask you a question? What would that have to do with the subdivision?
We've got to stick with subdivision.
If the court remands the site plan, the subdivision plan becomes moot. If the court approves the site plan, the subdivision plan becomes moot. So it has nothing to do with the subdivision plan. Please be separate.
Right. Just to break down the road.
Thanks for the question, Mark.
I think that's it for me. Oh, one last thing I did want to bring up, and this is because we can't talk about this because this is in terms of site plan, but going back to ForeScore, you should have received a letter from our board probably a month or two ago requesting zero emissions from ForeScore. And I'm sorry to break down the road, this was just our recommendation based on your site distance to North Park Field and the fact that we, at that point, figured, I'm assuming they were about the same size facilities, I don't know, lots we would hopefully be able to also have zero emissions at the property for, but in this case, it's Route 20, I know there's not a lot of houses, big houses out there.
We're going to, we're going to see, we're going to work together.
Right, thank you. Thank you. And I'm going to, I'll let you know, but please contact us as soon as you can. All right, I think I'm all set.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other boards that need to, what, the Chinese? Do you want to do that?
Yes.
So I think I have been through our subdivision regs more in the last two months than I've been ever. So in Section 3.1.5.
What, the subdivision?
The subdivision regs. With regard to sufficient width, it says, "The board shall consider, C, is the existing roadway fully paved, and is it at least 35 feet wide? The existing road, Old Worcester Road is fully paved, however, it is not 35 feet wide. The existing road that intersects with the applicant's cul-de-sac is only 22 feet wide, a width that is consistent along the nearly three-mile road of, from Main Street to Route 20. Regarding this requirement, the applicant's plan, it fails to meet this regulation. The only solution is to, which is kind of impractical, would be to widen the entire special roadway."
I'm not sure that's the applicable regulation, Patsy. This is like a preamble, and it's talking in that section specifically about a way in existence. That's language normally associated with an approval-not-required plan, and these are sort of like generic requirements. Your specific road standards would be under the design provisions in the back. So I was just looking for them when you asked me the question, so we'll find them together. It's Section 4, Design Standards. And there's a width requirement. I don't know if I'm going to say it, print out, I doubt it, no, I'm looking at that. Oh, maybe we are. Thirty, thirty-one, thirty, I didn't know you had a book. Thirty-one, bottom of the page, width. You with me? If the, the section number, if you can't find it on the same page as my printout, is 4.1.4. And then, these are the regs. So the regs would be A, it defines major collector, minor, and flexible development, and then the minimum width of the streets right of way, and I'm sure it'll also go on to define the pavement as well.
So I would consider Old Worcester Road a collector street, which says 60 feet. Correct? So it's even bigger than the 35?
35 feet is a minor lane usually.
So if I, but what gives you regard to the perspective character of different?
You've got a minimum, you've got a minimum width for a minor street of 60 feet too.
And then the collector is 60?
But that's the width of the right of way, that's not the travel width of the pavement. So there's a chart under 4.1.7.
But if you go, there is no physical way to get it that way. Even if they were going to redo the whole road, there is no physical way. They, they, there's just not the space to do that.
These standards are for the new roads that are being built, the new subdivision ways, not existing public lanes.
But it doesn't say that, right? I mean, unless I'm, unless I'm reading it wrong, I think I've read this 40 times, so.
Well, what's the question?
I just don't think that the road meets the sufficient requirement.
The new road or the collector road?
The collector road.
This section 4 is design standards, so you're designing for what you're building, not for what already exists, for what you're designing. I mean, it's no different than the two definitive subdivisions you approved at the last meeting. The roadways on the roads that lead to them are not 60 feet wide.
So a collector street, a street intercepting one or more streets in which, in the opinion of the board, is used to carry a substantial volume of traffic from such streets to a major or collector street, or a community facility, or which includes a principal entrance street to a large subdivision or group of subdivisions. So Old Worcester Road is the street that feeds off?
It says intercepts, this isn't intercepting. If you read the last part of it, go ahead and read the last few words again, Mike. What section again?
Yeah, 4.1.4.
4.1.4.
Yep.
Or includes a principal entrance to a large subdivision or a group of subdivisions. So this is not a collector street, this is an entrance to a two-lot subdivision. It's not a collector street.
So even our, but even our minor is 60 feet.
The street itself has to be 60, that's correct. And our cul-de-sac, the design standard of our cul-de-sac is 60 feet.
That doesn't, that doesn't pertain to what's come with the road that you're traveling on to get that?
This is a design standard for streets that you're building. If you're building a major street, you have to build it 60, 60 feet wide. If you're building a collector street, you have to build it 60 feet wide. If you're building a flexible development street, you have to build it 40 feet wide. And if you're building a minor street, you have to build it 60 feet wide. We're building a minor street, and we're building it 60 feet wide.
So you're laying it out 60.
We're laying it out 60.
All right, so.
A minor street pavement width has to be 28 feet, including parking lanes.
In determining whether a way in existence, when the subdivision control law became effective in the town of Charleston, has sufficient width.
That is a provision, Patsy, that applies under 81L to approval-not-required plans. That language is limited to C in 81L, which references the appropriate roads that can be divided under approval-not-required practices. A is a public way, or a way certified as maintained and used by the public by the town clerk. D is a way shown on an approved definitive plan, and case law says bonded so that it can be constructed. And C is a way in existence, having any opinion of the planning board, the language that you were just reading. So it does not apply to a subdivision.
So we have ANR regs in our, in our subdivision?
You do, but this is not an ANR, it's a full-blown subdivision.
Why do we, why would we have ANR information in our subdivision?
Everybody does. You always put ANR stuff in the subdivision laws, because it's a form of division of plan, which is also very little by the same statute. So the standards are the hard standards in Section 4 in the back, street design standards, for new construction.
For new construction.
And I note that, you know, in a lot of subdivision regulations, because I draft them, many towns have put access adequacy standards for roads leading to subdivisions. The leading case is a Falmouth case from back many years in the 1980s. In the Falmouth case, they said that a road leading to a subdivision, an existing public way, had to be adequate for its intended purposes. And the case law has been more or less driving that for now 30, 40 years. So most towns will say that a road leading to a subdivision will be deemed adequate if it has the grade, the pavement width, the, grade pavement width, site distance, and there's one other thing you usually put. So that if, in fact, the road leading to the subdivision is a wholly inadequate road, you can deny it. But you have to have that reg in your, in your, in your rule. You have to have that in your book. If you don't have that in your book, you can't just pull it out of the air.
We have, I have, I, we just haven't opened it up yet.
And you may have it, because I haven't looked for it, but I don't see it in that place that you're referring to. That would not be that kind of a regulation.
I've read this, I've read it so many times, it just doesn't make any sense that.
81L.
It doesn't matter how crappy the road is, excuse me, before you put in a subdivision, you can find the worst one and just pop a road up there and have, and everybody has to deal with it.
You mean like a crappy public road leading to a road in the subdivision? And that's what the Falmouth case was about?
And so, because we don't specifically have it in our regs, we have to say.
A cardinal principle of subdivision regulation is that you have to have it in your book, and then you can throw it at it. That reg that you're reading is not an appropriate reg to throw it in. If there is another reg in the book, I'll be looking for it while you talk.
Right.
But I don't, but that regulation, because it quotes 81L, is quoting from the ABC section that I just alluded to. And those apply to approval-not-required plans.
Ben, Chairman, may I suggest the section that you can look at?
Great.
5.2.143, 5243.
I have that, I already have that one. We have it. We're going to read it right now.
Okay.
You can do that one.
I'll do that one.
The board may disapprove, approve a plan where it determines that dangerous traffic conditions may result due to inequity of the proposed access or of the proposed ways within the subdivision, or of any of the ways adjacent to or providing access to the subdivision. Okay. Old Worcester Road, which would service the applicant's subdivision cul-de-sac as an extreme port, is an extreme example of a narrow and meandering country road with nearly, with two nearly 90-degree angle turns approaching the entrance to the cul-de-sac from the west. In the site plan hearing on traffic impact, the Charlton Highway Superintendent Foskett said that, said of Old Worcester Road regarding truck traffic, the road is curvy and dangerous. Listen up.
You're asking us?
Any comment on that?
Sure. Sure. You have your engineers in the site plan, if we're gonna reference the site plan.
No, we're not, no.
Well, you did. You referenced comments submitted during the site plan approval process. So if we're gonna reference comments during the site plan approval process, then you need to go back to your own traffic engineers, who clearly determined that the road was adequate for a much larger project than a two-lot subdivision. And then your own engineers in this project reviewed it and reviewed it for sightline adequacy. So your sightline adequacy has been resolved, and the ability to handle traffic for, how many employees is that?
What's your way of looking at it?
For a subdivision, I mean, I'm sorry, for not even a subdivision, but for a use that would accommodate more than three hundred vehicles per day, was more than adequate.
Are you telling me that the use is, that the use on the plan should actually say, they should reference the site plan?
No, I'm telling you that even three hundred cars a day added to the existing traffic would not pose an unsafe condition based on what your engineering experts told you at the site plan review. And if we're gonna quote the fact that it's a dangerous road based on commentary delivered in the site plan, then I'm gonna quote your engineers who delivered expertise on traffic at the site plan.
On Elton Road, not Lursser Way.
No, it was on Old Worcester Road, coming to that location and that section.
That's exactly why I'm not a lawyer, because I said site plan, sorry.
Yep.
Okay. That was our fault.
Did I, did I put the site plan on?
Yeah.
The site plan called the Karen. Alright. That's fine. I still think that...
So this is what the court said in the Falmouth case. I'll just read you. In the Falmouth reg package, it just said that there will be adequate access to the subdivision. And like I said, further, later years, we've refined that to grade, uh, sight distance, important things. Albeit broadened connotation, the term adequate access or such cognates as suitable or satisfactory. Run like a light motif through the law of subdivision control, and courts have had little difficulty applying its basic meaning under different factual circumstances, blah, blah, blah. It means the free flow of traffic with a minimum of hazard of necessity depends on the number of location and widths of streets. The essential significance is that streets be of sufficient width and suitable to accommodate motor vehicle traffic and to provide access for firefighting equipment and other emergency vehicles, according from a New Jersey case. This is the Supreme Judicial Court of Massachusetts. So, I don't have, I do think that the gentleman has appropriately pointed out five point two, point four, point three. I don't like it. I would have, I wouldn't have worded it that way. But it does necessarily say that inadequacy is a factor that you should consider. And I don't know that I would decide a question of inadequacy based upon lay opinion when professional opinion is readily available. I would note in that regard that the fire chief has a letter in the package, which I believe, I looked at it a while ago, I believe it signs off, doesn't it?
Yes.
So...
But the highway superintendent, who knows these roads very, very well, said that it was a dangerous road.
In writing?
He said on video. We can pull that up.
Tonight?
Yeah, I'd like to hear that, because what I heard was that he...
Somebody in the audience pull up that video of, um, of...
Was that in this hearing or was that in the site?
That's a site plan hearing.
It was the site plan.
That's why we don't wanna go there.
You don't wanna go there? If you're determined to make this an issue, then I think the appropriate thing for the board to do, because you haven't closed the public hearing, is to bring in the appropriate people to advise you. In a subdivision fight, you're only as good as your expert. You're not gonna testify.
We don't have any experts.
Then you gotta get one. That's the point. You do have an expert on the civil stuff, Mike. And Mike is the star witness, so...
Mike Knight.
I understand that too. But it's all about Mike on the civil side. And as much as it's all about Mike on the civil side, it's all about your next expert on the inadequacy of the roadside. So if that's where you're determined to go, I would announce your intention to find that expert and bring them into the next meeting. And you're gonna need a continuance to do that, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct. The decision is due on the line.
Right.
Section three point two, point five, when the forms and contents, the purpose of a plan shall be clearly stated. The applicant has stated the purpose of the plan is to free zoning. The latter is a strategy, not a purpose, with regard to the use of the property within the, within the subdivision. So we would like to know what the actual use. We do these all the time with solar, and they always say solar, and...
The use of this particular plan is to continue the use set if it currently exists. You don't have to have a new purpose. It can be its existing purpose, and its intent is to be its existing purpose. I think that question was asked two or three years ago, and I think we said the same thing at that hearing.
You know, we're gonna talk.
And I know. So the purpose you're saying is the current purpose?
The current use, yes.
Current use is what it is?
Yes.
Nothing like that.
But you have all these drawings showing different things.
All the drainage.
All the drainage, all the tearing and everything, but it's going to...
You have to do those things in order to get the cul-de-sac approved, so we can make modifications to the land, to the site, to the ground, but continue to use the existing use on the property. That's what our current purpose is.
Okay. I still fall, I still believe that the section five point two, point four, point three, the dangerous traffic.
So the street that you drive school buses down is a dangerous street?
Just one school bus, it's fine.
Okay. So when two school buses pass each other, that's acceptable as well?
Yeah, it's acceptable.
Okay.
Okay. Alright. So, who, again, believe me, hours and hours and hours, we've gone into this, every question. We have, who is, what is the legal entity that is, um, that is sponsoring this subdivision plan? I honestly did a search for Valley Greenrow, and I got Valley Greenrow Inc., Valley Greenrow LLC, and Valley Greenrow Manufacturing. And our, the plans, and all the legal documents that go along with these plans only say Valley Greenrow. It's like giving approval to John Smith, John Smith.
So John, this is your fault.
And I've been through, clean up the plan, the initial application, all the paperwork. And I, so what is the legal entity that is?
I would have to look at the papers, and I don't have the entire application and all the submissions in front of me, but I believe that this is Valley Greenrow Inc.
Valley Greenrow what?
Inc.
That's the not-for-profit court?
I believe so.
Can we give that change in all the plans and all the legal docs? Because I feel uncomfortable quoting something for random.
Well, it's readily solved, because the applicant has to be the owner. So whoever are the owners of the two lots that form the ground underneath the plan must be applicant.
It doesn't say, the applicant's engaging?
No, it's all, but therefore, you can have an applicant, because it can be the party that is purchasing a parcel. But the owners must join in the applicant. So the owners are named on the application. So technically, it's all three, I guess, is who this decision would run to.
Yeah, I guess, I guess the question is, who is the nominee going to be, when and if the approval is granted? Because obviously, you're stepping in as Valley Greenrow, and in some iteration.
I would suggest that the decision be rendered in all three parties' names.
The two owners plus Valley Greenrow Inc.
Yep, yep.
Inc.
The application is signed by Nathan R. Benjamin Senior, Patricia Benjamin, Benjamin and Nathan R. Benjamin Junior. And the applicant is listed as Valley Greenrow.
It's Valley Greenrow.
Applicant, which doesn't exist.
Says, the owner's signed, applicant being the owner, and then there's an asterisk for that.
The two owners listed on the cover sheet of the plan would be Charlton Orchards Group LLC and Nathan R. Benjamin Junior and Kathleen L. Benjamin.
And they're identified as the owner applicants, and they have all signed the application.
We have it in front of us, Valley Greenrow, applicant Valley Greenrow.
You have to turn the next page.
Well, the important one is the owners. And I think he's just offered clarification that if and when this is approved, the entity of Valley Greenrow that will take possession of the property ultimately would be Inc.
So we, so we kinda know who the applicant is, okay. So, section eight point four, this section requires the subdivided shall take all steps feasible to protect the natural features of the subdivision, such as large trees, archaeologically significant locations, and some similar community assets, which if preserved will add attractiveness and value to the subdivision. The applicant has taken no steps in its application to protect heritage trees, red oaks, that are estimated to be over two hundred years old. Several such trees exist at the site of the proposed cul-de-sac. In addition, remnants of stone wall would be displaced by the subdivision construction. The subdivision underground drainage system, structure the size of a football field, and a cul-de-sac which is a hundred and twenty feet wide and eighty-five feet long, would completely change the character of the road and farm property by scarring the side of the historic orchard by removing excessive amounts of earth to level this section for an unknown purpose. There's always the pause, so... Whose words? Never mind, I am a very good writer. I don't speak very well, but I write very, very well.
The sections that are quoted are quoted from the...
Yeah, you see all my little sticky notes. You can tell they're pretty professional, too.
Well, again, I thought that's from a section that's captioned administration. There is a design standard. I urge you to stay within the design standard chapter. And the four point five of the design standard talks about due regard shall be given for all natural features such as large trees, watercourses, scenic points, historic spots, stone walls, and similar assets which if preserved will add attractiveness and value to the subdivision.
You're gonna have to read the book a little more closely to get this stuff down.
Did you see, did you see what I just read, though?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm, now I'm gonna Google a case in which I believe that exact provision was litigated. And I'll tell you when I'm gonna, go ahead and talk. Could you read that again?
Yeah. What is the, what was the reference to the other one that I... Yeah. He had that one.
Okay. Okay. Find that provision I just read.
What was it?
Four point five, I think I just read, for you. So in this case, litigated was the following reg. Ready? Match it up with yours. Due regard shall be shown for all natural features such as large trees, watercourses, scenic points, historic spots, and similar community assets which if preserved will add attractiveness and value to the subdivision. The judge concluded that the planning board was without statutory power to adopt such regulations. We need not decide whether regulations dealing with aesthetic considerations and environmental protection are permissible under the law, as we are of the opinion that the provisions quoted above are not drafted in such a way as to be enforceable. Whether a proposed subdivision meets such standards as, it was earlier referred, is attractiveness of the street layout, maximum livability, whether the preservation of a particular natural feature will add attractiveness and value, and what constitutes due consideration are essentially matters of opinion, will be the collective opinions of the members of the planning board at the time the plan is being evaluated. Assuming the possibility of setting forth clear and objective standards, we perceive no attempt to formulate such standards here. The regulations in question therefore fail to fulfill the requirement of apprising owners in advance what may be required of them, which is a fundamental tenet of subdivision control law. And I'll tell you, the origin of that comes from a guy who did planning forty years ago, and he went around and he got the job in a lot of towns, and he put the same thing in everybody's book. So it's not uncommon to see that still in subdivision books.
So just because a judge decided that in that case...
That's the appeals court, I read it. That's a three-judge panel.
So, just because in an appeals court it didn't work, that is...
I don't go to the appeals court and say, just because you did this once back in Tisbury in the nineteen eighties, doesn't mean I shouldn't challenge it again in Charlton in the two thousand nineteen. It's, this is the law of the Commonwealth. It's the same paragraph, almost exactly, word for word, if not exactly, word for word. Which is why it jumped out at me.
In what, in what town?
Tisbury. This was Tisbury. The case is called Chira, C-H-I-R-A versus Planning Board of Tisbury. And I taught for twenty-eight years at New Union. It was in my required readings for students.
So someone can come in and rip out natural resources and...
You can adopt regulations under different statutory arms to control that. Water health can control it, zoning can control it. You could tell somebody that before they decide to strip the vegetation off a piece of property, they have to get site plan approval, and put stormwater management and erosion control measures in place. You can't do it under subdivision control, because subdivision control is a very narrow law. It's only for two... It's only for two things, to supervise the orderly division of the land into lots so that they can be recorded at the registry of deeds, and to supervise the installation of municipal services, including roads, utilities, drainage, and anything else that's going into the ground. That's the limited purpose of subdivision control. It's not broad and environmental or aesthetic. It doesn't have those purposes.
Section 5.3, all about drainage. I have a whole entire page that I can read down.
5.3. All right, I'm here. I got a feeling these are gonna be Mike questions, though.
And he's not here, so.
I get it.
The applicant's plans show stormwater discharges into the right of way. This has potential to create safety hazard for flooding and erosion. There is no stormwater conveyance mechanism from discharge point to town stormwater system.
Which one are you on?
I'm reading my comment about 5.3 and drainage, the drainage system in general.
But are you starting with 5.3.1? Which subsection are you on?
Yep. 5.3.1, yes. The current town drainage system discharges to private property without necessary easements and conveys water from a natural spring to a perennial stream and a well. Town drainage cannot be upgraded without proper easement and environmental assessments. The town cannot issue permits for work on private property without easement. The town road could potentially be undermined because road swale and drainage system is under design for a volume of stormwater generated by the nine-acre subdivision pump system. A natural spring located on the proposed entrance to the cul-de-sac has potential to cause hazardous road icing conditions. The reliability and design of an underground detention mitigation system is an issue, such as the design is only used in industrial settings and no such system currently exists in the town of Charlton. The system will be underwater and will be full of groundwater. A pump will run continuously. There are potential noise issues and maintenance issues. If the system fails, the applicant has made no provisions for emergency repairs. The underground detention system has potential health concerns regarding growth of mold and mosquitoes. Underwater construction will require thousands of gallons of dewatering during construction. Stormwater mitigation proposed on the slope has the potential to cause channeling and major erosion control problems affecting new and existing roadway. There is potential that the stormwater will not dissipate. The proposed subdivision increases surface area, which will increase surface water runoff volumes. The applicant's French drain system has potential of adverse effects. It has potential to create increased drainage discharge to stormwater system and may not have necessary capacity to hold and handle water as intended. There is also a potential for the system as designed to lower the groundwater table and is counterproductive to Massachusetts stormwater standards that require commercial subdivisions to provide recharge to sustain the existing groundwater elevations. So, I don't have Mike here to.
And I note that 5.3.1 says, "The drainage system shall be laid out to the satisfaction of the board acting on the recommendation of the town engineer."
Or if none, the board.
There is one. It's Mike. He's given you five letters on this. Now he's not here. Did we mention that?
I don't think he really recommended it. Said he's never seen.
He's never seen it before.
Actually, can I just, I'm sorry, you're not sitting on the board, correct? It's a three-member board?
Yes, but I'm able to comment.
Okay.
He's an alternate.
And he's not.
But he hasn't been at every hearing. So even if he were an alternate and able to participate in the discussions and the deliberations, he wasn't at every hearing. So technically, he should be accused from participating as well. We were told this is gonna be a three-member board and the deliberations and the discussions were gonna be by a three-member board. So he wasn't here when Mike Graves dealt with this issue on December 17th, December 24th, again on December 17th. You know, Mike had dealt with all of these issues in his letter, all of these things that you talked about. They're all issues that apply to pretty much every subdivision in town. And there are issues that were specifically brought up for Mike to review and Mike reviewed and approved them and acknowledged that they've been satisfied in his seven pages of engineering analysis over the past three months. We can go back and we can watch the plans that were approved at the February 20th hearing. None of these discussions about drainage, impact, impact on roadways, stormwater runoff, none of these things were discussed with respect to any other definitive subdivision plan that's been adopted for purposes of zoning duties in the town.
We knew exactly what was happening. It was all gonna be solar.
And again.
We need to be extra careful.
But you know what's happening with this part.
We don't know.
Yes, you do. This is staying as is, as it's current use. I've stated on the record, if we actually do get a site plan approval for cannabis, we will withdraw, we will dispense of this subdivision plan. We've stated that on record. We've stated that we will not build this if we get our site plan approval. So you know what's happening. This subdivision plan is for the existing use of the property. If the site plan gets remanded or approved by the land court, we will not build that. And I have stated on numerous occasions, you can make that a condition of this approval. We won't build this cul-de-sac if the site plan goes forward for the cannabis project. So you know that it won't impact it.
That's incorrect, because if your site plan doesn't go through, who knows, you could be using it as a gravel pit up there. I don't know.
We would choose it for a lot of different things that we might decide to do in the future. For now, as we've stated again numerous times on the record, the intent right now, if we don't get the site plan approval and we get the subdivision approval, is to continue to use it for its existing use.
And I can't use it as a gravel pit.
Excuse me.
What font is it? Everybody else is talking.
Ken, I just wanna make a clear distinction between when we're talking about a subdivision plan versus when we're talking about site plan. We understand the board's position on the site plan. We get it. We're in court. That's why we're in court. Subdivision plan is not intending to support a cannabis facility. We say that every single hearing, if we go forward with cannabis, if we get the site plan approved, we are not building this cul-de-sac and you can make it a condition.
I believe our site plan decision is pretty great and it won't be approved, so my thought process goes to the subdivision plan where now you have a subdivision plan where you can do anything up there and it could potentially.
We would still have to come back and get site plan approval for a different use, which means you would have the ability to regulate.
For what? That is correct. They would have to come back for site plan approval. So you would have the opportunity to control the substitute use in the event they lost the land.
But we don't know what the substitute is for.
And they probably don't either. They probably don't anticipate. Patsy thinks she's gonna win a land court. Michael thinks she's gonna win a land court. So they'll figure it out when they get to the end of the day.
Exactly.
I think what the members and perhaps the audience are having difficulty grasping is that we have a legislature that said that if you submit a preliminary plan followed by a definitive plan, you freeze the zoning in effect at the time the plan was first submitted. And that that plan can really just be a placeholder, freezing the land shown on the plan under the old zoning.
And that's not a loophole. That was specifically put in the regulations.
It tells you that you don't have a lobbyist. But I can tell you who does have a lobbyist, right? And it was originally a five-year freeze. And then it became a seven-year freeze and now it's an eight-year freeze. So that's all part of the same coin. And that's the way the law works. I don't like it. You like it. That's the way it works.
All right, so can we, do we have official board questions, comments? John? Do you have questions?
I'm John Smith. I have a problem with her. You told it already. No comments. I will save my comments when I go over here and speak as I can, right?
You're a member of this board. You can speak. No one's holding you back.
Nope, that's fine. I'll save my comments for later.
Okay, so if we could.
Do subdivision.
Can we do subdivision-only questions? So long drawn-out comments, so if you do have comments and you wanna make them, turn them into a question. Okay, Kristen.
I have one regarding the lot shape.
You said your name?
I'm sorry, Kristen Castigan, 88 Carroll Hill Road. The plan was relatively recently modified in like the eighth or ninth revision to make the larger lot have this weird arm that comes around the other lot so that it looks kind of like a giant pork chop. And I wanna know, has this board ever approved a lot of that, with that five-foot weird strip hanging off of it, ever? Have you ever done anything with a narrow five-foot strip hanging off of it like that?
I can answer that with no. We turn down wonky-looking lots all the time because we don't like to.
So that's within your purview to say we don't like that shape? Not what we do here?
It would be a factor that you would regulate in your zoning. And sometimes do have a lot shape regulation. Bill, do you have a copy of the zoning law over there?
Yes.
There is not a lot shape.
This is the specific question Mr. Meskis was asked, and he applied that.
Like if I'm online and you Google Conkers, where I live, there is a lot shape regulation. And it talks about how certain parts of weirdly shaped lots would not count for area.
So the CEO did comment on this and he did not find any regulation that would present that? Is that what I understand?
Correct, yes, thank you.
All right, can I ask my next question? You don't have to. That's. So my next question is, under subdivision of land, section four, what would it be? A, or actually, I'm sorry, it's D. So section four D, under width, it says that we have four kinds of subdivisions. We have open residence, dense residence, business, and industrial. Now, VGG's been telling us all along that this is a non-residential subdivision. That makes it a business or an industrial one. That's all that's left. We don't have agricultural subdivisions. It's D1, width, and then the first section there, where it says the board will give due regard to the character of different subdivisions, whether open residence, dense residence, business, or industrial. We have four types. That's it. So you gotta pick one. Right? It's not residential, so it's either business or industrial, which is not the current use. Yeah, I'm just asking, which of the four are they picking?
Okay, that's your question and your time's up.
Yep.
See the numbering there?
Yeah.
You're in section four, but it just jumps to 4.1 something.
I mean, 210, section four, and then D, width. Yeah, this is Charlton subdivision?
Same one, but it meets a line and it needs to go to a number. 4.1, 4.2, 4.3?
Oh, I'm sorry, 4.1.
Uh-huh.
And then D1, sorry.
Oh, I see. So it's 4.1.4.
Okay.
Yeah, no numbers. They're just, she's giving the numbers.
So the question is, it's determinative. It's non-residential.
Yeah.
So would it either be commercial or industrial?
I don't know that the subdivision controller distinguishes between those types of non-residential. The only technical requirement that I'm aware of with a non-residential subdivision, in addition to the bigger roads that the book may require, is that a non-residential subdivision always must submit a preliminary plan. You can't get out of it. If you're a residential subdivision, you go straight to a definitive. Then that's the only distinction I'm aware of. Now, you would always require roads in an industrial subdivision to have a different character than they were in a residential lane. But that's a matter of local choice, not statutory choice.
Could you restate the last part of that sentence? You said that's a matter of.
Local choice.
Local choice.
The engineering standards are always locally created. There's no state law that says a road has to be so wide and the pavement has to be so wide. That's all local choice. Typically, a planning board will work with their engineer to draft these standards. And they may change from time to time because things change. Normally, subdivision control is fool me once, fool me twice. So if it didn't work the first time, you amend the rule so it never happens again. That's the way that this book works, that it's, you know, in a town that keeps track of it.
I have a follow-up question to Kristen's question about the pork chop. Has anyone on the board seen the CEO's ruling on whether that five-foot strip of land, what it is, what it does, why it's acceptable?
I don't have it with me today, but I did.
I did. I did ask him. I have it on an email if you would like to read it.
You can read it. I will.
Bill, in response to your query about item seven in the peer review letter dated February 1, 2019, from Graves Engineering, "The proposed lot has approximately 183 feet of frontage on Orchard Lane. This is more than the required 175 feet needed in the A zone the lot is located in. Mike Andre is correct. The property boundary parallel to Old Worcester Road is separated from that way by five feet of land contiguous to another lot and therefore that area would not be considered frontage for the purpose of a build of a lot." Kurt Meskis, Town of Charlton Building Commission.
So remember, to get the benefits of the freeze, they have to submit a subdivision. And that means two lots. And one of them has to have frontage on a newly created road and the other one can have frontage on the existing road. And I assume that's the purpose.
So to get around the, so to get around the zoning, they decided to put up a strip?
No, to comply with the subdivision control law.
I mean, doesn't the five, doesn't the five feet kind of? We usually don't like little pieces somebody could dump there. Kind of, it's, it was a wonky lot.
Whatever the lot is connected to.
Lot A.
Lot A, okay.
See, if he put lot B on Old Worcester Road, he wouldn't have a subdivision.
Then you have to do the A and R.
This is all about the freeze. That's all it is. It's all about the freeze. There's no purpose to that five feet other than to meet the standards for the freeze.
Otherwise, it would be in the library.
Chairman Gerard Lawson, 63 Old Worcester Road. Going back to the drainage issue, section 5.3.4, quote, "Provisions for the adequate disposal of surface water intercepted or collected by catch basins shall be made in such manner that no flow will be conducted over town ways or over the land of others unless an easement in proper form is obtained permitting such drainage." I refer to your book, Mr. Bobrowski. In the Handbook of Massachusetts Land Use and Planning Law, third edition by Mark Bobrowski, Chapter 17.02 Drainage, Mr. Bobrowski writes, "Drainage is frequently an issue in subdivision review." Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81m. Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one M, states that "Planning boards may supervise the construction of ways and installation of municipal services." The statute delegates power to the board to secure, quote, "adequate provision for drainage and other requirements where necessary in a subdivision," end quote. Mr. Bobrowski added, quote, "The planning board itself has the authority to disapprove a plan for reasons pertaining to drainage, provided that reasonable regulations are in place authorizing such review." Continuing in the textbook, quote, "The appeals court has held that a planning board may consider, through appropriate regulations, the off-site drainage impacts of a subdivision." The rationale of the case, North Landers, suggests that the board has authority to order improvements to such off-site facilities to the extent required for public health and safety," end quote. So in the Valley Green Grove subdivision, current town drainage systems discharge to private property without the necessary and legal easements to access private property for maintenance. Town drainage cannot be upgraded without easements and environmental assessments. The town cannot issue permits for work on private property without easements." Those are my words, not Mr. Bobrowski's words. So going back to the rules and regulations for subdivision in Charlton, drainage system five point three point one, under section F, create no adverse downstream effects. That would seem to be, but I'm sure you'll correct me, Mr. Bobrowski, that that would give the planning board the proper authority to regulate this.
I won't speak to the technical issue about the functionality of the drainage, and I'll leave it to Mr. Rosen, because that's a Mike Andre issue. And I'll leave it to Mr. Rosen to address the question of the easement.
So, two things. With regard to the easement, two things, and then with regard to Mr. Andre's comment of third. We are draining back onto our own property. We are not draining onto somebody else's property. To the extent that catch basins that the town built in the road, in the shoulder of the road, on town-owned property, not on the pervious surface but in impervious, to the extent that that, I'm sorry, impervious, not impervious, to the extent that it has been catching water and draining it, it's been doing it for an extended period of time. I believe two meetings ago, when we talked about the length of time, Mr. Russell acknowledged that it was well in excess of twenty years. So the two points are, number one, we are not draining it onto someone else's property or even onto town property. We're changing the flow within our own site for surface, natural surface water flow that already exists. And number two, to the extent an easement is necessary, an easement exists by prescription, it's been openly notorious adverse and existed for more than twenty years. With respect to the issues that are to be protected under the bylaw, they talk about off-site drainage impacts and create no adverse downstream effects. Mr. Graves in his, I'm sorry, Mr. Andre in the Graves correspondence has stated as much, and in fact went out to address the specific issue about Mr. Moore's property and Mrs. Russell's property, and reaffirmed that conclusion based off on a site review, a site visit, and an analysis of the drainage and the impacts of the drainage.
I'll ask a follow-up to that.
No, wait, wait. You've already asked a couple of questions.
No?
Yes, didn't ask.
Norrie Johnson Smith, Dresser Hill Road. For Mr. Bobrowski, to that point, is the Board of Health has authority to regulate drainage and impacts to adjacent properties and to prevent storm runoff and anticipate other hazards that might occur in the area. Does that necessitate that the board review the engineering plans and weigh in on that as a part of this process?
That is part of the statutory scheme. The law says that when the plan is submitted, the Board of Health has forty-five days to make recommendations to the planning board. And they're really, the planning board is not free to disregard those recommendations. If, for example, the planning board said, "A-okay, green light, go ahead," but the Board of Health said, "Whoa, you can't do that," then Mr. Rosen would have to file a lawsuit. He'd have to name the planning board, but it would really be against the Board of Health. So they do have the power to do that. I don't know if the Board of Health has drainage regulations per se, but they have plenary jurisdiction over drainage according to several subdivision cases. But they have to make a written recommendation within writing, in writing, within forty-five days with extended as possible.
Within forty-five days of...
The submission of the original plan.
To the Board of Health or to the town?
When the plan comes in, it's given to the planning board and copies are sent to the Board of Health. That's statutory, that's statutory requirement.
Did the Board of Health review that plan previously within that forty-five?
Only briefly and only at the last meeting, which was Tuesday, February twenty-sixth.
But the health agent has?
The health agent has been aware and was given, actually I have something here from Meridian Associates regarding a lot of technical calculations about some of the stormwater runoff and so forth. I think what Mr. Russell's, and this is speculation on my part, you can affirm this, but the issues that Mr. Russell, I think, was bringing up to our board was some of the potential E. coli and so forth, that, from water that is stagnant for a long time and could potentially migrate onto his property. And that, it's difficult to say again, you know, we as a board said, "We're not engineers." You know, we can speculate, but we were given some information and discussed it briefly at our meeting last week.
Brett Moore, fifteen Hammer Rock Road. I have two of these memos from Graves Engineering, one January fourteenth and one March sixth. And in both of them, Mr. Andre talks about, stated earlier in the letter, the engineers' calculations. I'm assuming he's talking about Mr. Novak's calculations. Is that, is that true?
What paragraph? What paragraph and which letter, please?
The last paragraph, the ones from Graves Engineering. So the ones that were all referring to...
What number?
What's the date?
March sixth, he just, he just pasted and copied. So it'd be section, the last page, page five, under B, the last paragraph of letter B. On the January fourteenth one, and on the March sixth one is...
So you're looking at thirteen B?
What number?
Thirteen B. The writer, Mr. Novak, bet, bet?
Thirteen.
Thirteen B.
Thirteen B, last paragraph.
Same thing on the new, so this is the one from January fourteenth, this is the one from March sixth. So it's, on the March sixth one is page five.
It's discussed earlier in the letter?
Yeah.
So really, I was just curious about those calculations. Were those, the calculations that we did kind of together that day, just walk into the property? Or they're volume tests or anything like that?
I can try to shed a little light on this. Again, these are Mr. Andre's words, not mine. If you recall, I think the calculations that Mr. Moore's referring to is, there are two things. One, there's the calculations that are associated with the subdivision design. Those are my calculations, that has to do with the rock from disturbing the... If everyone will recall, Mr. Andre provided a sketch showing the other two sources of water that came, that was attributed to the water. I don't necessarily think he did any calculations, more of like a third, a third, and a third was mentioned. Where only a third of that, where not, in his last couple of sentences, he says, "We will put the water runoff." Calculations on the volume, the margin diffused. So we think that is the differentiation that we're looking for, I hope. Explain it.
And that's what I, so it wasn't like, you know, when I think of calculations coming from an engineer, I think of the slide rule and calculator, those kinds of calculations. And this, I'll just bring this up real quick. This is that, yeah, you're talking about?
Correct.
I think we all remember this. So we had some calculations done. And this, this thing here is over here, just for point of reference. And I guess this is his detailed map, but the dye test showed that the amount of water through each of these little things is way off. It's not a third, a third, a third. In fact, this one here that I said is in the wrong place actually drains to the other side of my property. There's actually a culvert in there that we didn't find that day, up behind thirteen Hammer Rock Road, that somebody dug and filled with rock, just made their own, you know, the way we do it in Charlton. And that wasn't addressed at all. But with testing, you know, was figured out how this worked. And dye packs are cheap, you know, and I don't know. And it was also figured out that just about most of the water comes to the first pipe that comes off Mr. Russell's property. And we didn't do it because it costs too much money, but they said if you ran a snake down it, it looks like all those pipes in front of Mr. Russell's house and the guy up a couple of streets, all those pipes are hooked together.
So the...
I'm really disappointed, Mr. Graves, because what he did is he walked through my yard and guesstimated.
So you're asking, you're asking if calculations were done, or if...
Or if it was a walk through my yard, is that the calculation? And I thought for sure the word calculation in my brain is the slide rule and a calculator.
Give me one moment. Just, we did calculations for what came off our property. I think Mr. Andre's conclusion was, what was coming through other pipes wasn't going to change based on what we did. So he drew, made an assumption, right or wrong, professional or unprofessional, that no matter what we did on our property, we weren't changing the other two of the three sources. So he relied on Mike's calculations, which were calculations for what was coming off of Charlton Orchard, and determined that based on the drainage calculations done for the subdivision plan, there would be a nominal decrease in the amount of flow off of the property. And he had the other two points, and again, don't know if it's right, don't know if it's wrong, but those other two are not impacted by this subdivision plan in our project.
I'll just finish up.
Your time is up, I'm sorry.
Oh, really?
Yes. You're way over the...
Why did he get the calculation in my time?
Because he was answering your question.
Well, my question...
We need to move on, please.
Can I just indicate, to clean up a discussion we had before, that three-three-seven is mandatory review by the Board of Health, does track the statute, forty-five days after the plan is filed, the plan, the Board of Health has the duty to respond. Obviously, they cover drainage. Mostly, boards of health in a town that doesn't have sewers talk about wastewater possibilities, septic system possibilities. But that's in the statute. And it's in your book, too.
May I approach, because I have a little video to show you regarding what pump systems look like and when they're going to, when Mrs. Ketter... Okay, so my name is Ace Foxlin, I live at forty-seven Henson Road. I'm here, and I wanted to pay your attention because there are a number of things on this plan that are disturbing, okay? And I realize that we have a lot of experts, and I'm shocked at what is going on, okay? So, just so happens, I'm currently managing a project in City of Worcester where we do have de-watering. It's a pump station, sixty fifty, sixty by sixty. This is what it looks like with the water coming off of it. This is, this is the water coming off of our project, so it's like a drainage stream. This is a pump, it's a twelve-inch line coming in and gets diffused in a stream then. You can see what the volume is? This is for a sixty by sixty project. The project that's before you is, the de-watering that's going to require is for a football. Okay? So that's one, that's one video. This is, this is what it sounds like, it looks like with the pump. This is a frac tank that's on the site where the water comes in first and get treated before it actually gets dumped out of the stream. So you can see how much water is coming out of this, what it sounds like. And that's, that's actually the site. So it's relatively small compared to what you guys... So when you, you actually go to, go to a picture, for example, so this project we're analyzing is calling for a number of things. Mr. Rosen indicated that they're not dumping water off of their property, well, onto someone else's direct property, which is true. They're basically dumping their water onto the public right of way. And if you actually look at the plans, you'll see that they have a plunge pool and rip rap to slow down the water and to protect for erosion. But the minute that it goes into the public right of way, there isn't any of those protections. So what's going to happen is all that water is going to come down, just like you saw in the stream picture there. It's going to go down, it's going to cause erosion control problem, it's going to go into the swales. If you look at, this is a picture from the other day after the snowstorm. As you can see, there is no swell. So where's all this water that's getting pumped out of this system going to go? The other big issue here is that if you look at these plans, they've done calculations, but are they really accurate? And I would clearly say they're not, because they have five hundred and sixty feet of perimeter at the base of this little branch here that's designed to take the water off of the slope. There's a number of problems with that, but first order of business is obviously, French drains are for groundwater, so they pick up the ground. So that's going to be running continuously, it's not going to be able to accept the water that's coming off the slope. The slope is a three-to-one slope, there's a ninety-foot or ninety-two-foot elevation problem, which means that the slope itself has to be three-to-one, two hundredths of feet. So that's taking a football field, putting it outside three-to-one, and have all the water come off of that, supposedly getting picked up in a French drain. I'm not really sure why our expert has not picked up on the fact that, number one, when you're dealing with slopes, three-to-one slopes in particular, you're not supposed to let the water run for further than a hundred feet, because conventional engineering standards state that after a hundred feet, that water is going to want to come together and it's going to actually point load and cause a problem. Typically, what you see for this kind of construction, like at a landfill, is you see surface, not a perimeter drain at the bottom. There's going to be a serious water problem. I mean, the applicant has proposed using check dams. And on a piece of paper, they look great. They're all level, they're all perfect, the same elevation. But we all know in the field that that really doesn't happen. They're going to be up and down a little, they're going to entangle. And what water does is it's its own level. It's going to hit those check dams, it's going to want to move side to side, and by the time it comes down the hill, it's going to be roaring and causing a problem. So that's, that's a really, really poor design. I have a picture of the landfill that I managed years ago. And as you can see, you can see the magnitude of the slopes is what you're going to be looking at here, although this was a seventy-foot elevation drop right here, okay? And you're going to be twenty feet more than this, and you can see what was the DEP they, the city do here, okay? We have these massive slopes, I mean, swales here, they catch the water for the forty-foot, you know, divisions between the slope coming down. That carries it to a down sheet and brings it all the way down, and it gets dissipated into a well. You can see the massive size of that. All along, you know, three different slopes from the top coming down. What you guys are proposing is a stupor slope than this, longer, and you have no surface swells. Now, again, if you read any engineering book, it says, "You deal with groundwater with French drains, and we drill with surface water with surface swells." They're on the, okay? So as far as the drains are concerned there, that's a problem. There's a problem with discharging. I think your pump is supposed to discharge four hundred gallons a minute. Is that correct? Is that what it says? So if you think about it, groundwater going into a system that's not going to really detain it because it's going to be constantly flowing. You have two catch basins with twenty-four inch... You have two catch basins with 24-inch RCP or concrete pipes or whatever, maybe plastic pipes, going, you know, from the road. You have this nine acres of slope going into a French drain, it's going to be for the groundwater, all going into an underground system that's constantly going to be running. So, basically, this pump, if it's a pump system, is going to be roaring out of it, into the public right-of-way, and it's going to be causing erosion control problem. And if you look at the swale, that's a road swale. It's, we, we all live in town here, you know, they do their thing. They're low maintenance for the town, they're designed for the road and the water on the road. If you have all this water roaring into it from the subdivision, where's the road water going to be? That's a big problem. Number two, you're kind of stuffing, you know, two catch basins with 24-inch lines as well as 500 feet.
Is there a question in there?
Well, I'm just, I'm just pointing out.
We don't have, we don't have our engineer, so, I'm sorry.
So then I have a few other questions that I wanted to try to consider.
You are way over your time.
Well, the, the-
I'm sorry, but you're way over your time.
My one thing, my one thing is, is that I wasn't able to speak on the other items, because, you know, I wanted to just point out that, for example, you do have a regulation in, in the regs about the width of the road. This is not a residential subdivision. It is 4.1.3. C, all streets serving an industrial commercial subdivision shall be minimum of 60, 60 feet wide. That's what the right-of-way has to be?
That's the build. That's, that doesn't, that section does, does not-
They're calling us according to the design standards, not-
The width of the road, the width of the road for the right-of-way in, in, uh, Old Worcester Road, it's only 50 feet.
That has no bearing on this at all. We were told that, no.
This is a build standard.
The design standards, not the-
Okay. So then, I also have one, another thing to point out about the strip. You said it was a zoning issue, but it actually is in the regulations here, under your, your design standards, under-
Yeah, we've been through that before.
No, 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 this is the strip, which is, it's, it's 4.1.1I. Says, reserved strips for any access to streets or adjoining properties shall not be permitted except where, in the, you know, the words, such strips shall be in the public's business.
Again, that's under the design, the new plan.
4.1.1I.
That's under the new thing.
Under the design standards. We don't modify that.
The last thing that I just want to point out is, is that, that we have a bylaw in town for earthwork?
Yes, we do.
And, and we are, and it just doesn't need that. It doesn't need such an I. Under Section 6, 32A.
Additional questions? That reserve strip, is that, that, that 30, that five-foot thing all the way around?
Normally, a reserve strip would be in the back. Although I don't see a limitation in the, in the regulation. And it would be, you'd put a strip behind, behind the back of my subdivision, so that it couldn't go across the adjacent lane, and you couldn't connect it to it. This is definitely something which is preventing access from so-called Lot B to Old Worcester.
So this is a reserve strip, what they're doing?
There's no definition of reserve strip, but I don't think it's unreasonable to think that that's, given the wording of the paragraph, that that's what it is.
And that's an okay thing?
As what?
Is that an okay thing?
Is that, is there a strip?
No, it says it has to be, it, it's prohibited unless the planning board determines that it's in the public interest. Well, we don't define reserve strip.
We're just talking about the reserve strips, but I, there's-
So, may, may I point out something about the reserve strips?
Just give us, we, give us a minute to check this out, please.
All right, so, let's see, just want to-
So what is the benefit to the town for that reserve strip? I mean, the question that legally jumps out at me is, if they move this lot back up this way, instead of pointing it at 3 o'clock, they pointed it at 1, is what's left between the lot and the street or reserve strip.
Yes.
Do that's because of this, you bring it to him. Well, it's just doing part of the lot. But if they were pointing it this way, this, the area contains not 5 people, 300 reserves. That's the only thing that comes to, in terms of training.
When you talk about reserve strips traditionally, and when I see them traditionally, it's to prevent a property from getting access to another road. So, as you said, you have a street here, you build a subdivision here, and you don't want cars in the future to find a way to access, probably a different way. The road we're talking about is Old Worcester Road, and we're not prohibiting either of the lots from accessing Old Worcester Road. They can access directly over Orchard Lane to Old Worcester Road. The whole point is, we're actually directing them to exit that way, as opposed to restricting their ability to get to Old Worcester Road.
So this, I understand your point. The strict, the language is here, here is, reserve strips prohibiting access to streets or adjoining properties shall not be permitted, except where you give them your permission. But, you know, the point is, I think council is making the point that they can get access to Old Worcester Road by using the cul-de-sac.
And I think if you want a public interest, you don't want a driveway between Orchard Lane and El Turner Drive. You want them using Orchard Lane to come out onto the street. You don't want a, a driveway in between Orchard Lane and El Turner Road, from Lot B. You want them accessing Old Worcester Road through Orchard Lane. You want to preserve the site distances, which is why Orchard Lane was put, where it was put based on site distance right here.
But that's your opinion what's in the public interest? I mean, what really matters is what our opinion is in the best public interest, so, um...
It, it also has access. It has, it has 15 feet of access to Old Worcester Road, so it's actually not prohibited. It just doesn't have frontage, but it does have access.
Do we have additional comments? Questions? Only questions, I guess, for-
So, Madam Schiller, um, so, I, I guess I would question if it's in the best interest of the town having this, this, they typically call that a spite strip. They usually put that strip in front of open space on subdivisions, so that nobody, eventually, if the open space is, is sold by the town or community, they can't develop it because they have, they don't have frontage, because it's a spite strip. In this particular case, I would question the fact that, that by doing this, okay, that it will affect the taxes that will be paid on that property, because it won't have frontage, you know, it won't be a corner lot, okay? And, you know, why, why would the town entertain allowing people to do that so that they could skirt on the taxes? They should be paying their fair share like everybody else when you're on a corner lot.
Thank you. I have a question.
Well, they would be paying taxes on that, that would make-
Yes. Is it in the public interest to allow people to do this on their lots?
A corner lot would pay, big question.
Remember, we, we, we deny wonky lot structures, and we, we try to, we set a precedent, but not allowing people to have those weird lot lines if they fit more stuff in, or do-
So, if I might add to my statement, it also is a problem, because we're assuming that, you know, these guys are doing this subdivision, and it's them now. But suppose, you know, things change, and they sell the subdivision. Now, the person buying that lot wouldn't have access, they wouldn't be able to do anything out in front of their property, not, let alone maintain that five-foot strip. So that, that's a, that's another thing to be considered when you allow something like that.
Mr. Do you have a question?
I do, actually. So, when, when I look at the, the topographical map there, the elevation change is 92 feet from the roadway to the top of the part that they're talking about subdividing. And that's nine stories. And in order to build that little Orchard Way, they, they take a chunk out of it and, and, and build the road. And what, what I'm trying to say is that, I don't believe there was any traffic analysis done at all on, on this one, right? That was completely all on the site plan, nothing on the subdivision. So my point is, when you're pulling out of Orchard Way, you're pulling out of this nine-story hill that has been, like, a chunk has been taken out. Now you've got bank-ins on both sides of you, and that's where the driveways are actually shown on the map. And I don't think that anybody can prove that those puny little driveways actually afford any access to the buildable portions of those lots. And in the case of the subdivision control regulations, it clearly states that, that you have to be able to, to get to the buildable portion, meaning like, the uplands, not the hill, you know, you're not going to build on this 3:1 slope. You're going to build on the uplands. And if we can't get vehicular access, that, I think, is a reason that you can say no. You can say, you know, we can't get fire engines and stuff up there, we can only get ATV up there. And we're not going to do that. So what I'm trying to say is, I don't think, based on what they show on the plan, you can actually access with a vehicle the buildable portion of each lot, from Orchard Way. What, right, is it? Uh, I'm sorry. So-
Yes.
So... Uh, thanks. Yeah. Charleston's a very, uh, yeah. I gotta whip it up, sorry. Additional question? Yeah, I think that's a different question.
That is an important one, can I, did our conservation agent, did our conservation agent ever contact Mr. Russell or Mr. Moore and actually walk on their property? I saw on the handout you gave us tonight, that he walked the subject property, but did he ever walk any of these other properties that we've been talking about?
No, we did get it. What you, you see-
What you write in that handout is all we know.
Yeah, so I think, I think you give the number now, I think it's 5.2.4.3.
Yeah, 5.2.4.3, it's really, you gotta really dig down. Is that it?
5.2.4.3.
I found it, sorry.
We discussed that one earlier. We discussed that one earlier.
Today?
Yes. I think 5.2.4.5 you're talking about. Look, I'm, I'm saying that you can't get a vehicle to the buildable portion of the lot based on what they have shown on the plan. You can't get a vehicle to the buildable upland portion of those two lots. So I'm saying that access by a vehicle is illusory.
The lot we're talking about is Lot B?
Both of them. I'd say either one of them. On the, I mean, based on the one, when you pull in and you go left, you're going to drive on top of the retention paint? I mean, look at the picture. You can't, you can't build on top of the retention paint, so the, you have to drive over the retention paint.
That's not upbeat. This is Lot B.
That's not, that's, that's part of it. We're not only looking at, we're only looking at Lot B. That's the only thing we're looking at.
Yeah, you guys could have to speak louder. Guys, louder.
Yeah, we're just showing the, the-
Pointing it out to me on the small drawing up here.
Showing the axis of the driveways where they're located on the plan, and how the driveways are located on the plan, and how, how they would feasibly get to the upland areas where the, the little lots would-
I don't see a regulation that says that the driveways have to provide access to the full buildable uplands on the site. So I'm missing that provision. We designed the driveways yet, and it brought them to the same level as the build-up road. But obviously, we would have to come and come and get site plan review and show you how we're going to build the driveways, while we come to get approval to build on the property. Because we have to have access to the property, it doesn't, it actually says access to the subdivision, but it doesn't say access to the buildable uplands anywhere in the statute in the regulations.
We are actually verifying Kristen's comment.
It's kind of common sense, you subdivide and develop land, and that every lot should be accessible, right? The buildable portion are emerging.
What she's saying is, if, if, if something was built up here, there's no access to it.
This is Lot B's number lot.
It's not a public way.
It's not a public way.
When the line re, caught a fire, the fire truck came up and they didn't take care of it. It's private lot. But it's not in the regulations. Doesn't say that anywhere in the law. The uplands have to be exiled. And the fire chief signed off on it.
Present practical vehicular access to a lot is from an A and R case called. There was an A and R case where they had frontage that existed in public land. And they came in and they, it was a guardrail. They couldn't get a car off the road. They said, we're going to cut it later. And like I said, the house coming, present practical vehicular access in a A and R case. That was an A and R case. So they would have to have, you'd have to have a right.
We're going to have to hire you to help update our bylaws. We'll be looking. All right, do we have additional questions?
Madam Chair.
I mean, it's ten o'clock, I may need to get out of here by nine.
Nancy, sorry, just in the follow-up from Kristen's question, Bill Varoski, sixty-nine Haggerty. What was the final resolution to that?
So there, there doesn't appear to be any regulations in our subdivision plans that requires access to the buildable portion of the lot. That comes later. They could always put in a driveway in some fashion that could get up there.
But it's not in the state regulations?
No. That language that you're, I failed to remember the name of the case, but it is, it's PULUS.
It is common sense.
P U L O S. But in the case, it was an A and R case, not a subdivision case. You understand the difference? An A and R, there's existing frontage. The existing frontage had guardrails all the way along. And when he came in for the A and R endorsement, he said, they said, well, how can you get onto the property? And he said, well, I'm going to cut it later. And they said no, and they denied it. And it went to the appeals court and the appeals court established a standard of present practical vehicular access for lots in an A and R plan. There's a different premise at work in subdivision control. Subdivision control empowers them to adopt rules and regulations for subdivision. But if the book is void of a regulation, you can't pull it out of thin air.
Can I ask the poll for that? So the rule for this board to adopt new subdivision regulations is what?
Say it again.
How does, how does this board adopt, how do they make changes to these?
They take, what I always tell me to my towns to do is take notes when you're doing this.
No, no, but I'm just saying, is it town meeting?
Public hearing, no, it's a public hearing, planning board, public hearing, two weeks' notice and then they can adopt it.
So they vote and they adopt it?
Nothing to do with town meeting.
Voila, you could change that instantly almost.
Well, you can't, well, and, but it wouldn't be retroactive because.
Right, I get it, but I'm just saying, they have the power.
Right, no, they absolutely. They absolutely do.
Just like the board health, it's pretty clear. Quickly.
I have another question, I want to go again.
One more.
So, you know, this, this standard in here about the adequacy of the adjacent way, that the way that serves the way that's going to be built. The idea, I guess, is that whatever you're proposing to do, which in this case is a commercial subdivision, you know, the adjacent way serving it has to be adequate for the purpose that you're proposing. Why wouldn't you use the subdivision design standards in Chapter Four, which say that the pavement width can't be any less than twenty-eight feet wide? Why wouldn't she use that?
Because that's what they, we've been through that three times now this night.
Yeah, I don't understand.
That's when they're building their roads on the subdivision. It has nothing to do with existing roads.
This is Section Four.
Well, it's kind of, it's a little hybrid, hybridized. You can, like I said, the first case was, and it's the Northlanders case that the gentleman alluded to. The only thing they had was you have to have adequate access on the road leading to the subdivision. In the subdivision, it's all about this book, right? There's nothing about to the subdivision, that's a public road. So that had to be an adequate road. And because it was so vague, the court almost ruled that it was not definitive enough that, to provide guidance, which is void for vagueness. So to avoid that in the years since that case, when we write the rules and regulations, we say the road leading to the subdivision must have, and I can't remember all four, but it's the pavement width, the site distance, the grade, and one other thing as required in the book, right? In other words, if the, if the road is a twelve percent grade and the book doesn't allow more than a ten, you've got a problem, you need a waiver. The North, the Northlanders subdivision was a huge subdivision and found it near the Mashpee Rotary and it was never built because old Sam Turner Road was a long way to fix and they basically never got around to it or never could afford it. So that's the standard. If you're, my message to the board on either drainage or adequacy of the roadway is that if you're going to revisit this issue, A, drainage, you need Mike here. If it's adequacy of a roadway, you probably need Jennifer Conley to come back. Because those are the people and the only people who will matter at a trial of this matter. And this is going to trial. If you, if you were to deem the drainage inadequate, Mike is the witness. And if Mike has a different opinion, you're up the court. And the same thing would be true with regard to adequacy of the road network. You are laypeople. You have nothing to offer the court in terms of these scientific-based standards. This is all expert testimony. A land use trial, you know, the board may make a cameo appearance to say, your honor, we tried really hard, but that's about all that matters. Mike is the one who matters here.
But wait, with all due respect, Attorney Varoski, people that were elected wrote these rules here and these aren't empty words on paper. So why couldn't the court accept the standard that the town created?
The court will accept the standard, but the interpretation of that standard is a matter of professional expertise, not lay opinion. Ultimately, it's your consulting engineer, your consulting traffic engineer who will testify at the trial.
But we don't have, we don't have that, we don't have.
Wait, 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 wait.
Well, you don't have the traffic, I agree with you there.
We hear that.
But you do have Mike on the civil. The, in several cases, the court has said that, you know, talking about noise or talking about this or talking about that, unsupported by expert testimony is my favorite, one of my favorite phrases in a footnote, is angst insufficient for standing. Meaning that laypeople can offer their lay opinions, but they don't educate the court necessarily when it's beyond the ordinary understanding of the finder of fact. And judges are just like us in this room today. They're just like us.
It's black and white and we clearly have people that put this down and pass it.
Yes, but the, but the traffic engineer would be the expert witness. Who else would testify that it's inadequate?
Well, it's less than the minimum. It's not, it doesn't meet the twenty-eight feet.
I got a letter in the file from the fire chief that says, good to go.
Right, but that's what I'm all interested in.
Well, so is he.
No, but it's not, it's not a quiz.
He's. The question is adequacy, not does it meet the standard? You don't have in your book that it has to meet the standard.
But I thought we had to go by the book.
The book does not say adequate begins at twenty-eight feet.
It totally has a design standard for the road.
It doesn't allude back to the standards for new construction. It just says it has to be adequate. And it doesn't define adequate as what you have to have for new construction.
It's a new street.
Well, it's in the, it's in the design standard, which are design-oriented standards for new construction.
It's an all-street.
Question, if we have an expert that contradicts Andre's opinion, such as Mr. Cottley, who's an expert, can he be used in court?
Can he what?
Be used in court to argue the point.
By the board or by you as an intervener? Certainly by you, certainly by you as an intervener.
Either way.
Well, the board would have to make a determination with counsel who they wanted to call as an expert witness.
So the board has the opportunity to choose the side?
This assumes that the board is going to have an opportunity to have counsel.
Let's not work it up.
Did this board give their approval of the engineer that you, that, that is making these measurements that are non-measurements to recommend about the?
He's our, he's our consultant.
Is that you approved?
Your name and address, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Karen Bodimer, three sixteen Stafford. Did you, did this board approve that or did some other entity approve that consultant for the board?
Chris, the engineer has been our engineer for probably twenty years.
Okay.
For their, I mean, our consultant.
Can I, if I recall correctly, at the February twentieth meeting, you guys also renewed him? So to answer her question.
That's the town, that's not the board. Yeah, that's not.
Okay. But you guys do the renewal every year of his contract?
Actually, he's working, he's not working on the contract right now. His contract is expired.
Okay.
So technically, no, I guess.
Okay.
So could this board acquire an engineer that does the measurements that are required to, to show, to show what the drainage actually is versus the measurements that this, I'm sorry, Mr. Moore, said they didn't do by just walking on the property? That seems like a real problem, that someone walked on someone's property, made some numbers up, didn't do the proper tests. That seems like a reason to get another engineer to.
That's really not a fair statement.
Okay.
Graves for years, so however, I guess the board can use it on discretion.
Ask them to do something else?
To what, use our own discretion.
Could the board ask Graves to do more?
We could, but we're really at the end of the.
We're at the end of the road.
Madam Chair, so I'd just like to make a point here. And not about bashing people, but I'm awfully sorry to say this, but we've had nine, is it nine? Plans done and redone and overly done? Because it was determined numerous times that there were a lot of things missing on the plan that were brought to the board's attention by the residents and myself. So it's very difficult for us to have confidence in, you know, the town's engineer when that's all transpired. We've demonstrated, you know, it's fairly obvious that this isn't, you know, the system that they're designing and what's going on here is going to be a severe safety issue for the town and a liability dumping on private property and all those, those issues. I would like to just say that it's not Mike Andre that approves this subdivision plan. It is the board. And he is your expert and you can listen to what he has to say, but it doesn't mean that you have to take what he says as gospel. It's up to you to determine, you know, what you have seen and what you perceive as being properly done and not. And I would say that, I think I've demonstrated that there's a lot of problems in this, quite a few.
No, thank you.
Just, Dr. Russell, Paul Westerrod, just to deal with the issue of drainage and Mr. Andre's assessment regarding the issue of water going onto my property. My recollection is he didn't take a position on that, but he deferred to civil authorities. Said that's between me and the courts or me and the town. He didn't take a position on that.
What his comment was, it'll be no worse than it is now, what his determination was as an engineer.
Well, that's regarding the amount of water.
The amount of water.
Not the legitimacy of.
No, that's true.
Of maintaining a pipe that, you know, they don't have authority to go onto my property.
That's true.
I'll just point out, we're not going onto this property, it's not our pipe. We have natural water flow off of our property. The town put in a pipe when they built the road and put, maintains culverts under the road. The pipe isn't on our property. We didn't put it in, we don't maintain it. We have natural surface water flow that we legally have the right to have. Every property has the right to have natural surface water flow. And what Mike looked at was that our subdivision would not negatively impact that surface water flow. We're collecting and we diverting in substantially the same manner in which that water already follows its natural flowing course over the property. And that, as an engineer, is what Mike is supposed to look at. From the portion of the water that flows across the street onto Mr. Russell's property, while Mr. Cottley might be correct that Mike Andre just walked and looked at the other sources, they didn't go in blindly on calculations. Mr. Novak did those calculations and presented those calculations to Mr. Andre. So they weren't just based on a random guess, based on taking a look at a piece of property and not doing the engineering or not doing the math. So.
We get it, but you guys missed the catch basins that I saw and I am like, I don't have them. So, so I get your comment, but there were, there truly were so many changes that both Mr. Novak and Mike missed. So I get everybody saying, having their comments, but we, the board witnessed the changes that the abutters actually found and had to be, because the engineers failed to actually physically maybe go to the property and find these things.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to make one more point here. And that is that, you know, this engineer plan does not meet stormwater, mass DEP stormwater regulations. It is not providing the recharge. It was mentioned in Mr. Andre's, one of his letters, I don't know if it was this recent one, but the last, the one before that, they're not providing the necessary recharge because they're actually decharging the site. So again, the board should not be approving any plans that do not meet federal and state, you know, stormwater standards. Because we have the M four permit that we have for stormwater and, you know, that's just very counterproductive. Everybody should be needing those.
All right, last.
Madam Chair, just as a quick response to Mr. Rosen, he's correct. DGG would not be coming onto my property nor would they need to. The town would need to come onto my property should that pipe crumble or collapse. The town would have to come onto my property to maintain, repair, install. Town doesn't have the authority to do that on my property.
Which pipe are you talking about? They have one that's.
The drainage pipe that comes from the culvert.
Right, okay, that's been there forever.
And then it's in my backyard.
I don't know that Mike addresses it in his.
We have an EBR, so no.
Well, there isn't. When apple law subdivision shall compel against you. Mike says it's not apple. It's, he just says if, although the project may be.
I mean. Yeah, they, they don't.
So that's, that's, that's our duly elected order duly appointed void to cover that kind of. Details. We have a letter from him saying it's, it's okay. So that's.
So do we want to close this?
It strikes me that there are, possibly, I don't know if there are answered questions in your mind after hearing the public comment, with regard to drainage and/or adequacy of roadways. But we're not going to get those answers tonight. And I, I think it would be appropriate to ask Attorney Rosen whether he would give you an extension to get those, just so that you know what your next step is in the evening's clothes. How things go for the rest of the evening.
So before you answer that, so the effects of the downstream runoff?
Is a concern. And if the engineering wasn't done to prove that, you know, that things aren't getting worse or there is going to be a condition of runoff to that.
Excuse, excuse, could you say that again, I couldn't hear?
I said, I'm talking about the downstream runoff from the culverts that you're discharging into. We've looked at that, but.
I believe you said the engineering was not done?
Yeah, well, the engineering for Mr. Russell's property and the pipes that are, for the downstream runoff, the, where the flow goes to.
Okay. What, what are you looking for?
I'm just asking questions.
Sure. You seem to be going around.
So I'm hearing tonight that, that the, the, I don't want to say the engineering, but the streams were looked at and the flow. but the streams were looked at, and the flow was calculated, and what percentage comes from which direction may not have been accurate? Is that?
Yeah, I think we're, we're rejecting what Mr. Andre says, and I, I don't want to speak to him, I'm speaking.
Exactly.
My interpretation of it. We found three sources, one, two, three, a third, a third, a third. That's the extent of the calculations.
Exactly.
The idea behind this is that two of those outlets are not being touched. Drainage areas that contribute to those two culverts is not changing. Only the one in front of our proposed subdivision, the drainage area to that, a portion of the drainage area to that is being altered. As he states in his, his letter, the runoff is decreased as required per your bylaw, and the volume is minimally reduced. The concern should always be the volume, because it's not, how it gets, when it gets there isn't always the issue, it's how much gets there. You want to dry something up, take water away from it. So if we're only taking very little bit of one of the sources, I wanted to say a third, I'll say one of the sources, if we're only minimally reducing the volume, I can't see how, even if we look at the two other areas that are not changing, how is that minimal reduction going to dry up anything downstream?
And, and just correct me if I'm wrong, the engineering.
I engineer, so you can't.
Can I, can I just, the engineering for the ones that we are impacting was in fact done?
Yes, hydro-cad model was, was performed, pre and post-analysis, modeling of our stormwater system that you've seen time and time again.
And I think Mike says it complies with the mass D E P stormwater.
It was done in the, in the, in the vein of that, even though it's not required. So those calculations were done per standard.
And reviewed by Mike Andre. I mean, Mike Andre.
It's Mike Andre. I just, I just wanted to clarify, that's, those are the calculations.
Oh. I'm sure that's, may or may not. Right, do we want to close this public hearing? Are we ready to continue that?
If you're ready.
Do we have any more up?
Once it's closed, then that's it, no more comments from the board.
It's just you.
Okay.
At the discretion of the chair.
Right, there would be no more back and forth or direct.
Unless I have a question?
The chair, may I have heard discretion, and ask or get an answer from the audience, but you don't have to do that.
Okay.
Once you close the public hearing, however, no new information coming through the board.
I heard, and I believe Todd Girard is aware of this, that either Pete Borie might know the answer, not to put him on the spot, but I thought either June first or July first, the state of Massachusetts is changing the whole way that it does all its drainage underneath streets. There's no more just sticking a pipe there and going from A to B is not going to be allowed. So I'm wondering, where we're already in March, by the time this thing may happen, is that totally going to change any of this drainage that's hitting streets? And what that may do to either Jerry's property or whatever. I know, I've got a drainage that comes from across the street, dumps on my property, and it's, I don't, there's no easement or anything on my deed that allows anybody to do that, but it's there. But I've been told that if that needs to get replaced, that it's not going to look like that after June or July first.
Unfortunately, I don't think that's pertinent to this plan.
Right, we have to go with what we have right now.
Well, I'm just thinking if they had to do any drainage changes, I want to almost to roll down.
It's in effect right now.
Adam Sherman, ask Mr. Bobrovsky a question?
Yes, last.
Uh, Mr. Bobrovsky, so does the town assume liability if, if this board approves this plan, and their drainage system that's pumping, you know, hundreds of gallons a minute out into the public right of way, causes a dangerous condition, it causes an accident, it causes a problem? Is this, is the board and the town liable because they permitted it and, and, they permitted it and approved it?
The Court Claims Act was amended twenty-five years ago, and it provides for broad and extensive municipal insulation from liability in circumstances like this. The threshold for municipal liability would be wanton, reckless, and willful, but it wouldn't apply to ordinary negligence if the board were to make a mistake.
Doesn't the board have the authority to require that someone filing for approval provide insurance for adjacent properties that are at risk of flooding? Isn't there a bond opportunity or some kind of a?
The bond is typically for construction pays, to make sure that it gets, it is necessary infrastructure, to make sure that there's money in the pot to finish the job if the developer goes bankrupt before close the fund. But typically, in something that requires ongoing maintenance, a bond can be used, a maintenance bond can be used for that purpose. But there's a difference between a construction bond and a maintenance bond. But a maintenance bond is pretty common, especially with stormwater, because, you know, nobody cleans them out with detention basins, and if they don't, you got a bond, you can go clean it up.
And would that be an appropriate measure in this case to protect the neighbors?
It's certainly something that the board can discuss. I can lead you through the appropriate language once you close the public hearing, if that's your intention. Otherwise, it's a lot of reading for nothing. Don't read the whole thing and everything.
What would the appropriate amount be for a bond, since drainage seems to be the big button issue here?
Yeah.
And there are bonds in place to protect the abutters. What would be an appropriate amount based on this project to ask them to hold?
I would defer to Mike on that, because he understands the maintenance, and I have no idea.
Is there any precedent for prior projects of this, typically of this size? I realize it's a grading issue.
I'm admittedly, my call upon, since Mike is not here. No, I, I, I think my experience is limited to subdivisions which may have, you know, as many as ten detention basins, and, and somebody's got to clean them out and maintain them, and make sure that the vegetation doesn't take, take away from the capacity to withstand weight of stormwater. And I know a lot of developers just forget about it after a while, and if there's a bond in place, you can exercise on the bond and go clean them out.
And is that something, lastly, is that something that they can put as a condition to approval if they so choose to approve a bond up to and not exceeding X, Y, Z dollars?
Yeah, I would rather be more precise with the help of Mike, but.
But, I mean, with the lack of him here, if they so choose to.
I don't think, I think you can get that information from, I can get that information when I write it up.
Okay.
And Mark, we would have no issue with a condition as part of, like, development permit process, that we have to confirm with Mike and come back before this on the board and post inappropriate bond in an amount, which is definitely determined by grades.
Most of the time, the subdivision regulations have a provision for calculating performance guarantees, so it would be the civil engineer's estimate plus a annual rate of inflation plus a cushion, usually ten or fifteen percent. So there's always enough.
Thank you.
Question on Mike Andre's report that we received today, it says that they maintain more comments about the roadside swales and the whole roadway, culvert way.
Which number?
Number thirteen A, well, that's paragraph of A, number thirteen. And his comment is the applicant would be willing to discuss the work with the board on swale maintenance, things like that, something that he has concern about, and we, as neighbors, have a concern about, that if that swale is not maintained, it overflows into the roadway causing hazardous conditions and potential property damage. When we first moved into Old Wester Road, the end of our driveway washed out a ten-foot drop from the roadway, the road runoff, and the town had to come and regrade the road in order to fix that.
We would also have no objection to that being part of the bond.
Okay, I was looking up the bond provisions. Could you say that again, so I can make a note to myself?
Regarding.
What you just said, I, I was, I was looking something up, and I didn't know that Michael was going to say, well, accept it as a condition.
Swale maintenance.
The last section of thirteen A regarding swale maintenance on either side of the culvert sack.
As, as neighbors, we have experienced a swale that did not work and lost land of our driveway by ten feet from the roadway.
Yeah, I, I've already got that noted, because Mike said it was to be a condition. So I'll just put performance next to that, too. Okay, thank you. Question on that.
Rick Bro, Levin Purnia Road, it was brought up tonight, the huge underground water storage or the potential for mold and mosquitoes. What's V G G going to do to prevent that?
Do we have an O N M plan as part of?
Can it?
Do we have to go to construct? I think we submitted, I think Mike has a copy of our O N M plan.
Yeah. So it's a Concom O N M plan, right? Conservation.
No, it's, it's a stormwater O N M.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's been submitted to Mike Andre, where he commented.
So what is, I guess I do understand the answer.
So it's, it sounds like there's an O N A, O N M plan for maintenance of the drainage of the stormwater.
Wait, but I, I think what's a plan to keep, to prevent the mold and mosquitoes? I understand it's a plan, something is written somewhere, but what does it say? Like, in a nutshell, what's the plan?
There's observation, there's, there's observation, what's that? Built into those systems, so someone from the surface can look in and see if there's standing water, and there shouldn't be, if there is, they can be flushed out and assume, I'm not a mold or mosquito expert, but I would assume as long as that water isn't allowed to stay stagnant and is flushed out, then it shouldn't be an issue.
And that O N M plan is a part of what permitting process?
Well, it's actually part of, it's required as part of the SWIP.
SWIP, oh, okay.
Yeah, under the, under the Construction General Permit. But he, it was, it's also was a request of Mike Andre as part of this review as well. So it's, it came up twice.
It actually came up, Mike actually also asked us to go back and specifically include tasks related to the subsurface chamber, and then confirmed that, that it was a draft.
So the SWIP is Storm, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan?
Yeah, there's, there's actually also.
That's a requirement under federal N I P T S.
Right.
And that would come, there's a copy that would, would be issued to the board of their compliance with the SWIP.
Adam Sherman, I'd like to make a recommendation, if you do entertain a bond, that it would not be a bond, that it would be a letter of credit to be posted for maintenance and in cases there's problems with the system. A bond is basically useless, because by the time the town would be able to access it, it would, it might be never the way the bonds were.
And I don't disagree, chasing a, a bond is, is clearly dead end sometimes. A tripartite agreement or a letter of credit would be my preference.
Right, thank you.
Do we have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
David?
Hi. So I gave you Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one U, and I just want to make sure that we understand that the subdivision is governed by this provision of the law in terms of your decision-making process. But if you look on the second page of the handout, it says after hearing required, the planning board shall approve, or if such plan does not comply with the subdivision control law or your rules and regulations, or the recommendations of the Board of Health, shall modify and approve, or shall disapprove. In the event of disapproval, the planning board shall state in detail wherein the plan does not conform to the rules and regulations or the recommendations of the Board of Health, and shall revoke its disapproval on approval mode, which as amended conforms to such rules and regulations or recommendations. So the standard here is not discretionary, if but only if the plan complies with the rules and regulations of the board. If you don't have special permit-like discretion, you know, it either complies with the regs or it doesn't comply with the regs. If it doesn't comply with the regs, you may modify it to make it comply or disapprove it. But once they make it comply, note that last part, you shall approve. So it's, it's a very different law than zoning. It's designed differently. Like, some, some states like Rhode Island have discretionary subdivision approval. You know, you don't like the looks of it, you can say no. But here, it's all tied to rules and regs. You've got to, if you're going to say deny, you've got to find something in the regs where it does not comply.
So, I know that I was questioning, but I still believe that there is dangerous traffic conditions. I, I get that certain people say yes, and certain people say no, but in my personal opinion, knowing that road, the plan void made is through the plan where it determines that dangerous traffic conditions may result in inadequacy of proposed access or proposed ways within the subdivision. I think that there's an access issue. I, you know, we can, that's why people are saying things, and I'm just going through my interpretation of our regs.
What is, what is the, what is the access issue?
I think that the Old Wester Road is a terrible dangerous road, especially in the ice and the snow. You can barely get a vehicle down that road. Even without snow, you know, on a clear old sunny day, you have, it's hard to get two vehicles, a school bus and another road. Is it possible? Yeah, you scratch up a buddy, it's just, it's just dangerous. A couple cars going fast down that road, and with those turns.
Plenty of cars out there.
It's a, yeah, it's a dangerous road.
I would kind of agree with you that it is a dangerous road.
I get, I get we have engineers that may have come to this town who don't use that road, who've visited twice or once and taken a determination off of some computer system. I just, I do not agree, I've been living in this town for a long time, and it's not. So that's my first point. You guys can chime in, and Jane, I don't know how you feel about that.
I feel the same way about that.
And I worry, and I, again, sometimes it's the common sense piece.
And, and, and I agree with you, but I'm not sure in court, since we do have experts that have said that that road is adequate for more traffic than one or two lots subdivision would give it. I, I, I agree, I think it's a horrible road, and we should have it closed. But, but unfortunately, I don't think that's it.
Troll Bridge.
Yeah, that's, I don't think, I don't think we could leave this state.
I mean.
Unless we had a, a traffic engineer committee and testify to that, but that's, that's the problem.
I, you know, as a board member, I, I don't want to make a plan because we believe a judge won't like our decision. So, I go, I, you know, we're elected to make that decision based on what we, what we know, and I, I, I understand sometimes you start citing case law, and you start saying, oh, you know, wow, it's a, you can't, you can't not deny, even though common, everything, your common sense is, this is a dangerous road, and this shouldn't happen on this road. You can't deny it, because the judge might not like it.
So what modifications into the, the subdivision plan could you put to, to alleviate that issue?
Yeah.
Because that's. Because that's what's, what's gonna have to happen.
Okay, I have one question though. In this, it says the inadequacy of the proposed access. Does that mean the proposed access to the subdivision road, which is Orchard?
Access to the subdivision, which would be Orchard.
Well, no, I think, I think it includes the ways adjacent to or providing access to the subdivision, which would be Ole Western.
Correct. And if this is gonna be great big mounds here and everything and you've got a little, got a little big street going in there, put your sightline coming out and going in.
And that's what Jennifer gave you in the site plan review.
Not on this, though. Not on this. Not on the subdivision.
This is based on all these curve cuts through El Turner.
I'm saying this is a bad, they're creating a bad thing to go in and come out.
I don't, I don't know.
And turning right, that is a corner right there. So as you turn right, nobody's gonna see you come out of that road at all. Right, right where the, I stood where this proposed subdivision road is gonna be. You cannot even see around that corner. It's, it's, correct me if I'm wrong, it's like a ninety, it's like a.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Everybody! Thank you. We're talking up here.
Madam Chair.
And it's getting late, if you can't tell. Can he talk?
No, let's just, let us talk and then we'll.
Yeah, we'll ask you later.
Okay, you just said correct you if you were wrong and I was pointing something out to you.
I, I, I never mean that.
So, before you go too far down this road, I just wanted to tell you that I didn't mention this in the ground. To approve this subdivision, it's gonna take a three to nothing vote. A two to one vote will be a denial. It is not the people present tonight that count. It's the five-member board. They have to have a majority of the five-member board, even though you've got two refusals, which is why we asked Attorney Rosen if he wanted to go forward.
Right.
And so it's a two to one vote will be a denial. I just want you to understand the rule will be a denial.
Two say yes and one says no, it's a no.
Two says yes and one says no, it's a no.
Okay.
So, so on page eight, there's engineering work that was done on the sightlines to the road. This was reviewed by our engineer, this was approved by our engineer.
But not a traffic engineer.
But not a traffic engineer. But, Bill, this is a linear measurement.
It's just a measure.
So they're saying two hundred and eighty feet in either direction.
So the way it calculates site distance is you take the speed of the eighty-fifth percentile car. Traffic engineers will actually follow the cars to measure the, because most people go faster than speed. And the stopping distance, it's gonna be longer. And then they take that and then they, they add the grade as a, as a factor. And then there's a calculation under Ash Toast and under its fourth star.
Bill, do we have a, do we have traffic engineering on the subdivision or it was just on previous plan?
Yeah, this type.
Not in the subdivision.
So, I stood on the road, not even, not even on the orchard property, on the road, obviously. And I could not see around that bin and I was scanning where the road would be. If I went on. Not an engineer, but I do have my glasses on so I can actually see. She didn't even talk about this community impact study. That's, if, if we knew the actual use, the community impact study, but I don't.
The use is an orchard. And that's all we can go by then. We know it's not true. We know what this is, but.
The drainage on five point three. I still have questions on drainage.
Mike says it's okay.
But Mike, remember that, remember that the basins in front of the property were missed. Okay?
Originally, yeah.
Originally, and there were nine.
So are you saying?
And, and I, I, I questioned the accuracy of everything when two engineers missed.
So do we need to find a new town engineer? Is that?
I don't, I don't know if we need to find, maybe, I don't know if that is the, is the truth or not, but it alarms me because we're all laymen and we expect, you know, accuracy and when things have been modified so many times, I. When you think of town, you say, oh, no.
You just went through ten revisions, back and forth and back and forth. But part of that is because we, our peer review says one thing and then they counter it with something else.
But also remember, a lot of these things were found by butters. So a lot of things would have never been, I don't think they, maybe that they would have never found those.
They've done a great job.
They might have not found that. They might have not even, if, if a butter didn't come up and say, hey, you know, there's like big holes in the road in front of your house and water drains in front of the property and water drains down it. Everybody's like, oh, maybe, maybe we physically should go on the property and look.
If we get our stipend and things, we can get it back to the town.
We have, we have great tenacious citizens.
If we get our stipend increased, we, we may have to give them back to the townspeople for their services. So, thank you.
Unfortunately, none of them are hired professionals by the town as experts.
We do have any one of them, professional engineer.
But not an expert.
And not in a butter either.
So I, I, I agree. I, I know what you're, what you're saying and I wish I could find a reason that was.
So do I.
That, that, that we could, we could hold up and take the court.
So.
The stipulations and the regulations, and I'm trying to be pragmatic here.
I'm still on the eight point four. I get what everybody said. I, I feel that all, any natural resources, everything has been kind of ignored. It is what, kind of deal with it for the subdivision, but.
And once again, our environmental consultant doesn't have a problem with it. Todd. So our professional expert says it's okay. Whether it is good or not, that's all we can go by.
I don't see any trees tagged. Do we see trees tagged? How many, how many, how many trees and stone walls are in the pictures? Remember, when you review something, you only see what's there and what's, what's not in the pictures, what you don't see.
Should we do a site review? Do a walkthrough?
I think we're gonna need to. Right now? No, no.
Too cold.
So we also have the, the reserve strip issue too, which, when that first came in, I think on the plan, I'll, I'll leave it, they was like, what the heck is this? And then I thought back to the plan we made to modify because we weren't.
Because at that point, it wasn't a subdivision, it was an A R.
We're not allowing wonky plans.
Oh, for that. You're right. Is that enough legal ground to stand on? Now, once again, this has to be defended in court by you.
Yes, that's right, I am the attorney.
This will be a straightforward legal interpretation by the judge. If you look at the plan, it has to prohibit access to streets or adjoining property. And they left themselves fifteen feet to get to Ole Western. So, yes, it prohibits access to the street on Ole Western, but it doesn't prohibit access to the street, to the street at the end of the reason.
I'd like a land court judge to look at it. I'd like, I'd like a use to truly be defined and not, and not purpose. And I'd like a legal entity to be printed on the plan. Those are my, those are my things.
A little what to be printed on?
The legal entity name to be printed on the plan, so it.
That's contrary to case law. So, they're gonna have to tell you what they're gonna do. The case I gave you, the broken stone case, they abated and switched to that. They said it's gonna be an office and at the end of the day, it ended up something completely different. It's the land shown on the plan, not the use of the land that's frozen under this law.
But still, we, we get, we get plans all the time and they actually state the use on them.
Nobody else is trying to use this process in order to freeze an old zone. It happens very rarely. It's only, you're only gonna get a plan like this when somebody's looking to freeze old zone, if that's all this is about.
So even though there's subdivision plans that we get to freeze zoning, they could always change their mind and not do solar or do something else.
But we can base our decision off of, off of the honest.
What we did honest in the integrity of, of the building.
You can only base your decision on the rules and regulations. You have to tell the judge that this failed to comply with provision X, Y, Z, and for that reason, we deny it.
Well, I'm telling, I'm, I'm saying it doesn't, it doesn't comply with five point two, point four, point three. It doesn't comply with the five, three point two, point five because the purpose of the plan has not been clearly stated. I'm saying it does not comply with five point three, which is stormwater drainage. I'm saying it doesn't comply with eight point four because they, they didn't take the steps necessary to protect natural features and, and four point one point one I, the reserve strips, because I don't know what the heck those are for. So that's, that's me. And I'm ready to go.
Do you have, do you have the engineering reports to back those up? If you've got the engineering reports to back those up, I, I'll go along with you. That's just the problem is, is we hire experts and trust me, I hate this plan. I hate the subdivision regulations that allow this to go through. But I'm trying to be pragmatic and, and look at the regulations and look at the guidance that I had from, from counsel. And, and, and I agree, we, we, we may be deficient in, in the engineering that, that has gone into this or that, that's gone into this, but that's the engineer that we've used, that's the engineer we've always used. To change that for, for a reason, it would be difficult.
I, I, I hear your opinion, I respect your opinion. I'm interpreting the, our, our regs based on my research.
But you've gotta have an expert that'll agree with you, otherwise. If you get up there and say, "It doesn't meet this engineering reg," and Mike gets up there and says, "I think it does," and I'm the one that was, they hired to review it, who were they gonna believe?
When I'm up there defending this case, I will, I will, I'll accept the judge's decision. I think that happens with smiles. Remake the vote?
It would be appropriate for discussion purposes and voting to make a motion to approve it. See how many, you know, obviously, it's more appropriate to see if you get the requisite three votes and then if you don't get three votes, then it's not. You don't need to make another vote.
I understand that there's a matter of principle. If you don't like the plan.
There's nothing to do with me not liking, liking the plan. I, I truly believe it does not comply with all of our regulations. So maybe I, I am, I say.
I make a motion to re-approve the plan.
Do we have a second? David?
Well, let's, I think we can discuss it a little bit. If we, we disapprove it, what are the regulations and the reasons that we disapprove it?
I did name them all out. I believe that.
So, and, and what is the engineering to back that up?
I, the board may disapprove.
That's it?
The board may disapprove a plan where it deems that, where it deems that traffic, that dangerous traffic conditions may result due to inadequacy of the proposed access or of the proposed ways within the subdivision. And I.
And I'm saying inadequacy of the proposed access.
I, I, then what we need to see is a traffic report that supports that.
There is a traffic report.
And there's tons of them.
So.
No traffic court, no, no traffic report was submitted by the applicant.
There is no traffic report.
To back up the.
And I'm saying, as, as a board member and a resident, I say the road's dangerous. There is no traffic report to, to debate it either way. So I say access. I say.
So do they use a previous traffic report on that same road?
We can't say that it's a.
No, because.
No, I'm just not.
Only what's been submitted into the records, well, for the, for the subdivision.
So.
So there is no traffic plan?
There is no traffic report and.
It's the opinion of the board that.
But make no mistake about it, if it's denied for traffic, regardless of whether there's a traffic report here, there will be experts.
Okay, it's not actually traffic?
It's, yeah, traffic is an irrelevant feature.
It's the inadequacy.
It's adequate.
The inadequacy of the proposed access.
In other words, the adequacy comes first and then you apply, then you ask about the traffic and whether it can.
Okay.
It's not the traffic. You can't deny a subdivision if it generates too much traffic.
So, so you're gonna need to find an expert that, that agrees that the road is adequate.
That there's a, there's.
The proposed access is not.
Proposed, so you're gonna have to find an expert that agrees with that. Am I right?
Yes.
We will need to find an expert that, that says the proposed access.
We'll have to pay an expert to, to prove that the access, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm, at this point, like, at this point, we'll put in our. At this point, without anything else, I believe that the road is adequate. And that's me as a whatever. I believe that the use is not clearly stated on the plan. We can, we can, three point two, point five, we can debate it. But I'm saying as a board member, I'm saying that I don't believe, according to our regs, that they clearly stated the purpose.
Okay.
On.
They did say that they weren't, I mean, this is all we can go by. I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking at it legally and, 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 you know, I, I know it's not true. You know it's not true. But legally, they said they're not changing the, which is their right and, and I'm not sure.
Yeah, but right now on the plan, it says it's to freeze. And I don't, I think that.
Has a subdivision ever been, denial ever been upheld because of?
Use. I mean, not in a reported case. The purpose of the plan is, is clear to everyone. It's to gain a freeze.
I think freeze is, is a strategy and not a purpose. And, I mean, do you see lots of plans that say that they're just there and they, and they actually say, "We're doing it just for the freeze."
But it's, it's, it's a, it's a legal way of doing it. It's, it's been approved by the legislator, legislature to, to, that's why it's in the regulations.
The purpose of the plan.
I don't like it.
Okay.
And, and I don't like it and, and I.
I don't like it and I don't think it complies. So the section five point three, I think there's tons of drainage issues. I think our engineers caught some of them and there is so much going on. And I, if we, if we gave it another couple weeks, we'd probably have another whole sheet of things if they started looking. I, I think that this concept out there and I think that it is dangerous to approve something to hurt other people's properties. Again, every time I, we, we look again, there's something else and, and very uncomfortable. I think it does not comply.
Will we find an engineer that can, that will state that?
And I don't think, on section eight point four, I don't think they shall take all steps feasible to protect the natural features in subdivisions that supply trees. take all steps feasible to protect the natural features of subdivisions that supply trees. I, um, I, Todd's very good at what he does, he does it, I, I don't see these things on the plans. I think that they, it was ignored, and, um.
Well, I wanna remind you that that's not a design standard. I, I pointed you to the design standard in section four.
I'm sorry, four point five, that's section four point five, I'm sorry. I'll also add in the legal entity, I really like ink to be printed on the plans, so I'm assuming if it gets overturned, then we wanna add that back, so I wanna add that back in. And on four point one, point one I, the reserve strips, that just is. That's, those are my problems.
And I have problems there too. I'm just not sure that legally, they're defendable. You know, I, 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 if they're, with the, with the strip, it's ugly, but we don't have any regulation against it, and that's my problem. The regulations that are in our subdivision plan are what we need to go by, and if it's a regulation that says.
The regulation says reserve strips prohibiting access to streets or adjoining property.
But that word isn't prohibited there.
Shall not be permitted except there, in the opinion of the board, opinion of the board, um, such strips shall be in the public interest.
But it isn't prohibiting access to, to Old West Road. They can still access Old West Road from that law.
Yeah, but all the way.
But not all the way, but we've never, but there's a lot of lots that, that have maybe not as exaggerated as that.
So let's go, let the, let the judge look in, do we judge magic, pick it for us, and tell us a lot?
We have a motion in a, in a second.
On favor?
Once again, like I said, unfortunately, the guidelines that we have in our subdivision regulations, and the experts that we've hired to review this plan, at this point, say that they meet all our requirements. I don't like it. I don't like the plan, but I, I wish I could find a legal standing or a, a, a reason to, to, to push back on and, and be able to fight it in court and, and have a chance to win.
I think access is a very good legal reason.
Access is, is a good reason, but we don't have an expert that says that, that there's a problem.
Wasn't the Beal case based on access?
The Avon case?
Then, is it, was it ten? Beal first.
It's offshore somewhere, I don't know. I don't, I don't remember if it was.
So that was, um.
I think it was access based on use.
It was access based on use. So it was access to a commercial property through a non-commercial lot. Which is prohibited on the zoning.
So I guess this is a non-commercial property and going through a residential, it isn't, it's not, it is a non-commercial property, we determined that.
You're saying it is a commercial property, is what you're saying?
It's a non-residential.
It's a non-residential property.
Which is, the only option that we have is commercial, so non-residential. Going through a, through a residential.
What they've said is, it's not changing use, so it's whatever use that property is now that's accessed from that area anyways, so. Once again, I, I, I want something to drive on to here.
I'm, I'm, I'm ready for a vote, so I'm, it's ten fifty seconds, please.
That's good. I, I don't like it, um, but I, I don't see anything within our regulations that, that would allow us to deny it, so I vote approve.
No.
We're done.
It's a vote two, two no's and one yes?
Yes.
So you need to, you need to, unless, unless you want to.
I was getting ready to call.
Hope you guys, just be quiet and.
Yeah, that's fine, let's see.
Keep it down, please, we still have a meeting going on.
So, I mean, we can authorize Patsy to sign.
Everybody can get a copy by email, and then we make changes from our.
So I'd like to make a motion for Patsy to be able to sign on behalf of the board.
Second, on favor?
But we would like to see it.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So.
No, I just.
So we have an extension in the.
Re-signing of the. No, let's, let's adjourn our meeting. I made a motion to adjourn.
We need a motion to adjourn.
Do we have everything that we need?
Yeah.
Do you want to send the motion?
On favor?